Good evening, calling the meeting to order on June 20th, 2023. Can we take the roll call, please?
Councilmember Evans?
Present.
Councilmember Obstello?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Randolph?
Here.
Mayor Millman?
Here.
Councilmember Bess Campbell?
Present.
Councilmember Arndt?
Here.
Councilmember Taylor?
Here.
All present, let's stand for the flag salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I move to approve of the agenda in order and content.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
I have one, sorry, I'll raise my hand. I was thinking that the agenda is written, has a special presentation from Green Partners, and we're going to be discussing an agenda item about their development agreement. And I'm just questioning how appropriate it is for us to hear their presentation before we hear our presentation from staff. So can we perhaps move it to the end of the meeting until after we've had this discussion? I want to make sure that what we get from staff is an honest understanding of what it is that staff and the developer have agreed on in the contract.
I didn't know, I don't have the content or the agenda order and content. Is that a special presentation in there? Okay, well, I'd like to see it in the order it's in at this point is if somebody wants to remove something and have it put down to business items, that's what's in order right now. If there's a motion to do that, we can discuss that. Otherwise, we're going to have a vote on the agenda.
I move to move the Green Partners special presentation to Agenda Item nine. Sorry, after Agenda Item nine, I would like to have the presentation moved there.
Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second. Councilmember Bess Campbell, as the maker of the motion, you can have first chance to discuss.
I just want to make sure that when we have the discussion with staff that we're hearing exactly what the development agreement contract is coming from, from our staff, to get the appropriate idea of what it is we're voting on. I know that Green Partners is excited to present us what they have, but I think it's premature to present before we vote on the actual development agreement. I'm just following in abundance of caution lest it look like we've pre-decided approval or not. I'm just looking for best practices here. So if we want to keep it where it is, fine, I'm just looking out for best practices and how it looks to the public.
Any other? Councilmember Evans?
So staff already presented their report to us. It's been in the agenda that's been public since it was published last week. So I don't know that anything that's presented tonight is going to sway what staff would report since it's already been published. So I'm not in favor of moving this. We have two people who've come here to present the Green Partners agreement so that the public has a better understanding from their point of view. We still have all of our business items that we can go through and review and discuss during the business items time.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yeah, I appreciate Green Partners coming and taking their time to present their project and give us more detail on what's in the project. I would like to see the special presentation and particularly in courtesy of the time and also so the public that is here would have the ability to see some of the presentation and what goes along with that. So I'm not in favor of moving it to Business Item number nine. Any other discussion? Seeing none, can we take a vote?
Point of order. I put forth the motion and it was seconded. And now we have this motion on top of it. What should we do to actually separate these two because we're taking a vote?
So any council member can move something from the agenda order content. It's been moved to move it to Business Item number nine. So there is a vote on that.
Okay, thanks for clarification.
Okay, all in favor of it being moved to Business Item number nine, say aye.
Aye.
Point of order, I said after Agenda nine so that they could do the presentation right after the vote on their development agreement, so after nine, between nine and 10.
Okay, after Business Item number nine, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No? Motion fails. Can I get approval of agenda order and content as is?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to move special presentation to public comments portion of our meeting.
Do I have a second?
This would be appropriate for all that are in our audience, have the same time to discuss and talk. So I'm not sure, it would be right for the same reason that we proposed to move it after nine, let's put it to public comments and have public comment time.
It's currently scheduled right before public comments, is that okay?
Let's put it at, well, it looks like 15 minutes to me.
Deputy Mayor Randolph?
Public comments are three minutes.
Can I get a clarification of the goals of the council member for the switch so we can make sure that we're...
Let's back up, we don't, do we have a second to move it? I'm sure, I'm still not sure where you want to move it to. It's currently scheduled right, it would be next, right before public comment. And you want to move it to where?
To public comments with three minutes each.
All second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. As the maker of the motion, you have the floor.
Okay, I think it's fair that we receive all public comments for meeting items equal without providing any bias or special attention. Either that or we open up public comments to longer than three minutes. So that's the proposal to move it into public comments.
Any other discussion? Again, I oppose this for all the same reasons I cited before. I think that we have experts on this project. I think it'd be good to hear from them and we'll have the opportunity to ask a few questions. So I'm in favor of just keeping it as is. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion to limit the special presentations to three minutes and public comments, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
No. Motion fails. Can I get another motion, please?
I move to accept the approval of agenda in order and content.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, next up, we have special presentations, Green Partners. Who would like to go first?
Hello, council members. Thank you for accepting our quick presentation on the project and Mulback's. My name is Jason Henderson, I represent Green Partners, the developer of the project. And after just a quick overview of the project, I'm going to turn it over to Julie, the Mulback CEO, to talk more about Mulback's integration of the project and, you know, the story of Mulback's for the Gardens District. So just wanted to go over really quickly the project, the different phases of the project, and then the public benefits. Really, our development has four main objectives. We want to create a development where people can live, work, play, and stay in downtown Woodenville. We have a 19-acre site and we feel that it's a very compelling opportunity to add a ton of vibrancy to downtown and keep a cherished institution downtown in the development. It's a pretty rare circumstance we find ourselves in with such a storied business and a beloved business like Mulback's. So we take great pride in what we've been able to put together with them and to create a project that integrates it for the next 65 years. So of course, any project requires a lot of infrastructure with a 19-acre site without existing roads through it. We've got quite a few to build. And so as you can see, we basically followed the recommendations in the Streetscape Master Plan as part of the comprehensive planning effort for Woodenville to cut in Garden Way, which would stretch from 175th to 171st, extend 139th, which is currently a dead-end road, to 171st, and then two north, and then one north-south new street, and then one east-west internal streets to the project. In conjunction with Widener's project, we're also participating, along with the city, in a roundabout intersection at 171st connecting Garden Way and then, of course, signalization improvements on 175th. What that enables us to do is break the site into five phases. The first phase is the new store for Mulback's and about 219 residential units and some additional commercial. Then we would hop over to Phase Two, just west of the new Garden Way. And then Phase Three, the frontage along 175th is the main focus, and then over to Phase Four. Phase Five, we can start as soon as we're done with the Phase One infrastructure and it's slated to be about 120-room hotel. In Phase One, it's broken up into two buildings with Mulback's Garden and Home stretched all along the ground floor. It's a very green project, we're targeting lead gold. And so as you can see, a lot of different project elements we want to integrate and we really want to sort of set the tone for the rest of the development with this first phase. What's included in the development agreement, and staff will go into much further detail in their presentation, but a couple of things I want to highlight over the course of bringing this project through the process, there was a request to add affordable housing. You know, I think any project coming in, that's a completely valid request. It's very, it's, you know, a lot of housing opportunities aren't, you know, affordable to a lot of the people that live and work in this community. And so we'd like to do our part in exchange for that. As part of the agenda tonight is the consideration of revising the current city's multifamily tax exemption program. And so the ability for us to do that is premised on changing the economics just slightly to make it so that we can have 10%, about 120 units of this project to be affordable to a broad range of income scales. And then in addition to that, I just want to highlight that as part of the development, we do pay into park impact fees. There's a value, about $3.8 million into the Woodenville's park system and keeping, of course, the business sales tax, Mulback's in business, and then plenty of other retail that would drive more business sales tax. And then, of course, I just want to touch on one other topic that we've included that's new into this agenda item. We heard from Planning Commission that they were very excited about doing a sort of community garden, but we think it's a great idea. We think, you know, if there's space within Woodenville, we're more than happy to participate in an effort to figure out, you know, what, where that can be done. We just want to recognize our site is quite constrained with the amount of development that we want to bring to downtown. And so what we do want to do in response, though, is put together something that we've talked about as part of our program, the city and a garden concept. So we've got about 150,000 square feet of public open space planned throughout the entire project, and about a third of that we've slated conceptually as planted space. And when I talk about planted space, I mean very intense gardens, landscaping that would make Mulback's proud. So, you know, throughout the site, I think we've got a great opportunity to highlight what is, what can we do the best, native gardens all throughout the site? Can we teach people about native gardening? Can we demonstrate the plant diversity in the Pacific Northwest? And this is, this is an incredible opportunity to create an entire district where part of that story is integrated throughout the whole site. And so that's kind of what we've been putting together and we'd like to present as a response to the Planning Commission recommendation and to talk more about Mulback's and sort of this idea and really the genesis of the project, I want to turn it over to Julie Cuia, the CEO of Mulback's.
Thank you very much for allowing us to speak this evening and to kind of share our vision of what we're creating at the Gardens District. I realize when we started this project, it was over eight years ago, and there was a lot of collaboration with the community, with neighbors, with the city, with various subject matter experts in urban planning, environmental sustainability, and landscape architecture, and more. It was a really collaborative process and we came and presented to the council. We also shared the findings with the Planning Commission, and there was a lot of conversation and discussion. So I wanted to just reinforce that this is not just something that kind of came out from somewhere and was introduced or landed on your front step. This is something we've worked really hard to work with the city of Woodenville to find a way to make this the best small downtown in the world. We really are working on something that we think is going to be differentiated from so many of these suburban strip mall communities and to really create something that has a sense of place, a sense of heart, that connects people to nature and to one another and kind of improves the social fabric while also supporting the economy of this community. So. A little bit of background. So Mulback's is a family-owned business. Egan and Lina bought Mulback's and started Mulback's in 1956, which I think was over 35 years before Woodenville was incorporated. And the city has grown up around us. But we are, our business has kind of evolved with the needs of the community. We started out as just a grower, and then we were a grower and a retailer. Now we are a retailer and a landscaper. And really, that is a reflection more of how we are responding to the needs of our customers and the community around us. We connect people to one another and to their surroundings, I think, in a really meaningful and impactful way. So we believe in inspiring beauty and sustainability. So we inspire people to create those beautiful spaces that blur the lines between the inside and outside, so your homes and your gardens. And I'm very proud to think about how many gardens in this Pacific Northwest have been enhanced or graced by Mulback's and the role that we've played in that. Our commitment to sustainability has been growing, and this development and our movement into the development is an opportunity to kind of create this, I mean, to really build on that and live very visibly and invite others in the community to live in a way that is much more in tune with nature and also supports environmental sustainability. So we have a plastic pot recycling program. We carry only organic and natural gardening supplies, no synthetics or chemicals. We have a preference, we give a preference to vendors and growers who align with our value. We have a fantastic partnership with Oxbow, just up the road, and we are now participating also as a partner in the Pollinator Pathways Project here for Woodenville. And that's just the tip of the iceberg in terms of where we're going. Okay, so that's the history. We realized that over the years, the area surrounding us changed quite a bit, and the development kind of changed where we stood in this community. And at present, we're sitting on a physical infrastructure that's 60-some years old. It's going to require significant investment to bring back to, you know, workable condition. And we were aware that the city had been working on a vision for what Woodenville was going to look like. So we didn't want to just rebuild in a place where we were blocking several grid roads and kind of right in the middle of downtown. We wanted to be part of a really thoughtful 20-year development that would actually enhance the community and where we could continue to operate in Woodenville. Because one of the things that's important to us about this project is we wanted to put down roots, not just for the last, you know, 65 years, but for the next 65 years. So we invested in a visioning project. We found the Green Futures Lab, which is at the University of Washington. They study sustainable communities around the world, and they find the very best models and bring them back. And they have, they focus on environmental sustainability, but also social sustainability, what makes a community tick, and then also financial sustainability, how can these communities thrive? So we wanted to be part of that. And that process I talked about earlier, we did involve a lot of people in a design charrette. Then the program went and came up with a couple visions, and we worked on this for several years until we came up with the garden vision as the frontrunner for where we were going. So together with that input from the dynamic group of collaborators, we came up with the city in a garden. We wanted it to be a really vibrant, walkable community that would really kind of help us to kind of develop in a whole new way. So getting people connected with nature and the well-being that it provides, and then also, you know, preventing urban sprawl and protecting the existing residential neighborhoods. And so there were a lot of things that went into thinking about what this vision could be and what the city could look like, and that's where we came up with the Gardens District and that idea. Our vision caught the attention of some world-class players, and we are very, very lucky to be working with a development partner who shares our values and our vision. So that was a win for us and for the community, I believe. Also, working with GGLO and working with GGN in the Landscape Architecture Group and working with Graham Baba, we have a whole roster of people that are just amazing developers, amazing architects, and are really committed to this project and are committed to Woodenville. Environmental restoration and healing Wooden Creek is one of the major points that we are focusing on, particularly in this first phase. And we're going to have beyond just Wooden Creek, there's going to be a native garden kind of regional underlay throughout the community, throughout the whole development, that will be consistent and beautiful, but then there will be pops of intense gardens, so, you know, bright pops of color, almost like art installations of gardens, and then some small production gardens that will be not just made-up production gardens, but actual small gardens where people will be using the lavender to actually make product and then to share and to sell. So I think you are well aware, the Gardens District is 19 acres of mixed-use development in several phases. Our phase is number one, the first phase, and we have a lot of things that we've taken into consideration for the community. We're taking thoughtful steps to ensure that the people living, working, and visiting the city of Woodenville during construction have the best experience possible. We are going to continue to operate the store, which is no small feat and is really, it takes a lot of work to kind of keep our business running while the development happens around us, but it is a commitment to Woodenville, it's a commitment to my employees, and it's a commitment to the health of the business community in this town. We're also going to be, Jason alluded to some of the grid roads to kind of help with congestion, and we're going to be, we're coming up with very creative parking solutions on our own site during this project so that we're not impacting others. One of the things I want to point out is that when we first said we were going to be part of this mixed-use development, people thought we wouldn't have any plants anymore because plants need sun. So all to the right there, from the middle on, those are all greenhouses. So it truly is our store, you know, the garden in the middle of this Gardens District, and we're excited that Mulback's gets the opportunity to continue to be at the heart of Woodenville. I wanted to say that I've lost my train of thought. It happens to us all. I, in thinking about this, the thing that has come up time and time again is that people, when they hear that we're developing, we're moving, there's, we keep getting the question, when are you closing? When are you closing? When are you closing? And I just, it's really disconcerting because we're working so hard to make sure that not only are we not closing, but we're thriving through this process. And so do me a favor, if anybody asks when we're closing, tell them we're not. And just know that our goal here is to kind of take our sustainability initiatives to the next level, to really set a new standard for urban development and invite Woodenville to be part of that. And we're really very excited to be part of it ourselves. And then just, you know, our opportunity to stay here and be part of this community that has really been, you know, where we grew up for the last 65-plus years. So thank you very much for allowing me to speak ahead of time.
Thank you. I'll open up some quick questions if any council members have any questions. We have a packed house tonight and a lot of stuff on the agenda, so if we could make those brief, that'd be great. Any council members have any questions? Deputy Mayor Randolph?
Didn't count, but we used the, you use word "community" quite a number of times. And I guess, I'm thinking this is both a commercial and residential development. How do you plan to actually invoke community in that environment?
Do I come up to the microphone?
Please.
I'm new to this. A lot of the studies have shown that actually having the green space is one of the things that connects people. It's, you're in your home and then you come out. If you have open spaces, and that's part of the reason for trying to do more density vertically, because these outdoor spaces invite you to connect with nature and with one another. The whole idea of when you're walking by a creek or strolling through an area, you are closer to people and you see the same people. So that's, that's part of it, just how you're living there. And then I think it's just the opportunities to engage with nature as well. We're going to be introducing those into the project as well.
I have a quick question on, you mentioned that the, one time before you mentioned that you were tasked with the idea of, and I might be getting these numbers wrong, but I think you said at Chamber of Commerce meeting, having the square footage of Mulback's and doubling the sales taxes, is that, is that the goal, is that you were, the charge that you were given?
I think that's what you heard.
Okay.
What I said was having the size of Mulback's and doubling the revenue.
Okay.
But you immediately turned it into taxes.
That's a hazard of this profession, yes, but...
So yes, that's true. That's what the, that's what the goal is.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, I appreciate you taking your time. That was a great presentation, I really appreciate it. Thank you very much. We're moving on to public comments. Okay, before I go in here, we have several people signed up for a public comment. We did have some written comments that were pertaining for Planning Commission, speaking very favorably of Commissioner Yabroff. Those are all sent to all council members to look at.
Emily is now exiting.
Okay. So first up, you have three minutes. Please state your name and whether you live in the city limits, and you have three minutes. First up is Alex Campbell.
Good evening, Alex Campbell. I live in the city limits, and I'll start by saying unfortunately, my comments were apparently lost last week since I sent them at 9:00 AM. since I sent them at 9:00 AM on Tuesday, not last week, last meeting. And they did not arrive at the council before the meeting started and particularly were not addressed before the discussion topic about MFTE. So I won't read the whole email to you because, well, things have moved on. But a few key points, a bit of history for everyone. On April 4th of this year, this council debated affordability. And specifically, it was related to Wooden Creek, which was adding more units and asking for permission to do so because they were going to decrease the required commercial space for that. A few quotes then. Councilmember Arnt, "I would love to tackle affordable housing and make it mandatory." Councilmember Evans, "Moving forward, our developments need to have affordable component, full stop, no more gifting." Deputy Mayor Randolph, "There's going to need to be some level of requirement." And Mayor Millman, "Give our city manager the ability to go to developers and say, this is a requirement, it's not a negotiation." Unfortunately, really nice words, really nice words. Unfortunately, mere minutes later, all four of you voted to proceed with Wooden Creek having zero affordability. This was a sad night. So here we are at the next time. And we do not have requirements. The MFTE remains voluntary. The MFTE continues to only use the carrot. And I don't want to use stick. That's, that's kind of mean. Let's say the collar or the leash. Developers come here and they need to be given direction. So a leash is probably a better way. You know, carrot or leash. So let's just say, we need real affordability. We need it required, not in the development agreement. Negotiators may be good or whatever, but negotiations can always be changed with amendments. A true requirement is built into the ordinance and it's unstoppable. So I did send out some slides earlier today for all of you. Feel free to follow along. Woodinville voluntary, Bothell required, Redmond required, Kirkland required, Samamish required. All of those require 10% of all new construction. They don't get to pick. They don't get to pick phases. Then if they go higher, they can get MFTEs. All of them require 20% for MFTE of 12 years. And that's because that is the state law. So Green Partners is playing a little bit of a fast and loose here. We're giving you 10% because we're counting the whole project. But we're giving, we're doing 20% in just phases to get the MFTE. They should do one or the other. Preferably, they do both. So, and they will make more money. I also sent that. They make more money either way. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, Steve Yabroff.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm Steve Yabroff. I live in Woodinville, too. As you were debating the bridge design last meeting, I was enjoying time in Santa Fe, New Mexico with family. And I looked at a number of, of, of bridge designs and overpasses and said, you know, they do things in a way that's really handsome there. And I thought, if we could do something with some graphics, that's one example, and I'll call for another one in here in a moment. But if we could do something with graphics that would be Pacific Northwest themed, it would be something unique, special, and really could be very attractive. In this one, these are a number of graphics, for example, that the native pueblos designed. And each one of the overpasses has its own set of designs. Can I have the next slide, please? Here's another one. This is the area of Culiacan where it's one of the pueblos and they have these designs here. And you'll note that not only the, the bridge itself, but the area right where it comes to the edge of the, the bridge, that side, also has an attractive design to it. Can I have the next slide, please? And finally, you have these designs. Each time, the bridge is basic, or the overpass is basically the same, but you have different kinds of designs. If we had a nice, specific northwest, northwest theme, we could have something special and unique and memorable. And so I'd like to ask you all, give consideration to something like this as you're contemplating design for the Trestle Bridge. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Yabroff. Next, Kevin Stadler.
Excuse me, Kevin Stadler and I do live within the city limits of Woodinville. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I want to talk to you about Northwest woodland character and something that's spelled out in our comp plan and in our design standards. So when you guys were talking about the pedestrian bridge to replace the trestle, looking at those images, a lot of them were not Northwest character. If we expect people that are building buildings in this town to build them to Northwest character, I think that we should do that as well. So I urge you, when you consider those, consider designs, you take that into account and try to follow along with that. I want to thank Mr. Yabroff for teeing me up because I was going to say, one possibility, two, is, you know, we have the mural underneath the trestle now. We have the one on the side of the Carol Edwards Center. They just painted one on Big Fish. Those are great. We could do something like that on there, celebrating the railroad that came to Woodinville in 1887 and really changed the dynamics of this valley. The railroad came from Seattle. You could go on a spur that would take you out to the coalfields in Issaquah. You could also go north to Sumas that connected with the Transcontinental Railroad, giving the opportunity for the crops grown in this valley to be distributed throughout county, throughout Canada. So I think as you imagine this trestle and the entire trail, you need to honor that history. You also can take and, take into account the, the farming that we did in there. And especially maybe this is a good time to honor those Japanese farmers that were in the valley and, and were taken away from their farms when they were sent to internment camps. And there was only one family that returned to the valley. That family is still here, the Funis. And I think it would be great if we can figure out a way to incorporate that also into it. So again, just please keep in mind Northwest woodland character when you select a design for the pedestrian overpass. Thank you.
Thank you. Kimberly Ellerton.
Hello, Kimberly Ellerton. I'm a 16-year resident of Woodinville. And I'm also the Executive Director of the Woodinville Chamber. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I'm here today to provide positive public comment about the modifications to the multifamily tax exemption and the development agreement between Green Partners and the city of Woodinville. With the 12-year tax exemption, Green Partners can significantly increase the amount of affordable units or workforce housing in downtown Woodville. Rather than creating less than 50 units under the current program, Green Partners can create 120 affordable units available to our Woodinville workforce. Those people who are pouring in our wineries, making our coffee at Sidekick, and so on. This will have a positive impact on businesses who have a hard time finding and retaining employees. We have employees who are driving in from 30-plus miles to work here. By expanding this property, the city will significantly expand the opportunity for additional sales tax revenue, which will more than offset the 12-year tax moratorium on the workforce housing units. The Garden District project is a positive step for Woodinville residents, tourism, and for our local businesses. With added retail space and open and public space, as well as grid road implementation, our city will offer a better opportunity for patrons to get around, supporting our local economy, and for businesses. It was September 21st, 2017, when I personally first had the opportunity to view some of the renderings of the Garden District at a Woodinville Chamber luncheon, having heard previously about the planning work with the University of Washington Green Futures Lab that Julie mentioned. Now, all these years later, it's exciting to see this project coming to fruition. Thank you to our current city staff and city council for your careful planning of Woodinville's future and the future of our Woodinville business community.
Thank you. Gary Harris.
My name is Gary Harris. I'm a Woodinville resident. I wish to speak briefly about reappointment of Planning Commission members tonight. I know one of those is on your consent agenda. And one is one where you will be interviewing candidates and making a decision. I would like to speak in favor of reappointing Steve Yabroff. As you all know, I was a council member for four years. Elaine Cook, who I just saw walk in, was mayor prior to myself. And James Evans was mayor prior to that. Without having consulted them earlier this evening, I think I can safely say that all three of us hardly endorse Steve Yabroff for reappointment. I don't think there's any, and I don't know if Elaine is nodding her head or not, but I, I think that we're all pretty, pretty much agreed that Steve has done a wonderful job. When I came to council, I, I'm not a land use expert or a zoning expert. If you want to talk to me about pharmacologic management and disease state management, best practice guidelines in medicine, I can talk to you all day about that and be, be pretty darn accurate. But with both Kevin Stadler, Chair, and Steve Yabroff, Deputy Chair, I learned a lot about things that I didn't know about and things that made me a better council member because I took the time to voluntarily attend Planning Commission meetings. From time to time, I was the designated person from council to interact with the Planning Commission. And I always found it very interesting. And things that I didn't really know a lot about, I learned about. And so please, consider reappointing Steve Yabroff. He is an excellent person, honest, trustworthy, accountable. And you could not find a better person to have in that position. Thank you.
Thank you. Shenquan Ling.
Hey, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and the Council. My name is Shenquan Ling. I live in the Woodinville city limit. I came here to address a pressing issue that is near and dear to my heart, which is affordable housing. I think in one of the previous council meetings, the council explored the possibility of incorporating a mandatory requirement for affordable housing, reviewing future development, development agreements. And multiple council members here actually expressed that desire to include it as a must-have for the next, well, literally, next development agreement, which sounds really nice. And I got really excited. Today, the MFTE ordinance is presented to you for a second reading. I urge you all to seize the opportunity because it's right over here and make a significant stride towards a more affordable and a more equitable and accessible community. We must recognize the impact of this decision holds for fellow residents and our future residents. By stipulating a mandatory provision for affordable housing, we can ensure that developers are held accountable in their commitment to provide housing options that are within reach for all members of our community. And let, let us definitely not overlook the hard-working individuals who contribute to our city's vibrant fabric, our hard-working grocery store employees, staff from the hospitality, hospitality industry, and the retail workers who deserve affordable housing options close to their workplace. It is our responsibility to ensure that their needs are met. By embracing this requirement, we're not only providing equitable access to housing, addressing the pressing housing needs, housing challenges faced by many, but also forging a path towards a more inclusive and prosperous future for our city. I implore all of you to consider the long-term impact on this MFT decision and add a provision to mandate affordable housing, making it a requirement, not optional. A lot of the future residents of Woodinville, Woodinville will be grateful for, for including this. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else didn't sign up, would like to speak? Seen none? Okay, let's move on to the consent calendar.
Move to accept the consent calendar as written.
Second.
I have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Seen none, motion carries? First business item, second hearing and adoption of ordinance number 754, modifying the multifamily tax exemption MFTE program. Mr. Buchanan.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We have just a short presentation. You've seen most of these slides tonight. It's just an update based on the council action. It's your last meeting. Obviously, as mentioned, second reading and possible adoption of ordinance number 754, the multifamily tax exemption program modifications this evening. We've covered this slide several times, but just to refresh you, the current MFTE program as it exists in code today, generally exempts value of housing from property taxes for eight years. Right now, we only have that eight-year option. The commercial and land valuation under this current program and, and under the future proposed program as it's, it's in your packets this evening, is not exempt. It applies only to the designated target area, which currently council has established the entire CBD district. To qualify, the project must renovate or preserve a historic structure. In the applicable target area, that was one structure that has now been renovated and preserved. So that one is probably, is not really applicable at this point. But then the other one is provide affordable housing for the table there to the right. And that's, again, as it exists in code today. There's some important provisions that we've covered in our current code. The affordable unit mix, quality and distribution must mirror the overall project. The rental units, I think this is an important one. Rental units must remain affordable for the life of the project. Ownership of units would be up to 50 years. There is, of course, annual reporting and compliance that goes along with these projects. And thus far, two have, two projects have utilized this program. One was our civic campus next door with the preservation of the historic structure. And then the under-construction East Rail Flats directly across 175th are, will utilize this program as well. All right, reasons for discussion. Again, we've covered this one. We have two before you this evening. First and foremost, our recently adopted Housing Action Plan. Strategy number one in that, in that adopted action plan is incentivize new housing. Action number one recommended under that was to modify the multifamily tax exemption program to include the 12-year exemption. So that's kind of the, one of the genesis of this conversation. The other one, of course, as council's aware, is a conversation about wanting to have more affordable housing in the Green Partners Development Project and a conversation with that developer about how that could be accomplished and thus leading to this conversation about a 12-year MFTE program. So council passed first reading of ordinance 754 at its last meeting on June 6th. It essentially adds a 12-year option. It, council, after looking at several different options of how to do this, opted for a program that layered in affordability at that 12-year level with half of that 20%, 20% of the housing has to be affordable. The first half of that would be at the 65% AMI level. The second half would be at the 85% AMI level. When council discussed this during first reading, it did pass first reading with the change of going from 60% under the eight-year program to the 50%. You see that change highlighted there on the table. And as we've discussed at previous meetings, we've seen some, some utilization with similar programs at some of the other jurisdictions that we've, we've examined a little bit. So with that, of course, questions? And you have the recommended motion to pass second reading and adopt ordinance 754.
Thank you. Questions? No questions for council member or city manager? Okay. You have a motion?
I'll move to pass the second reading and adopt ordinance number 754, modifying the multifamily tax exemption program.
Second.
I have a motion of second. As the maker of the motion, Deputy Mayor, you have the floor.
I will reiterate the things that I did bring up in the previous meeting, that this is our first pass at moving things forward. And when we did this previously, my frustration was based around us not having any hammer to wield when it came to actually speaking with developers in terms of how do we move forward with appropriating something? in terms of how do we move forward with appropriating something for affordable housing. This is the first pass. There is lots of Woodinville still left for us to continue to expand. And those are things that we should discuss. But I think this is a good first step, given the things that we are building in our community right now.
Councilmember Best Campbell.
I'd like to make an amendment to the main motion. I would like to modify the eight-year MFT minimum percentage of affordable units from 10% to 15%. So 15%. Sorry, just to clarify. Instead of reaching 10% affordability to take advantage of the MFT, I would like to see 15%.
We have an existing motion.
This is an amendment motion.
I understand that. We need to dispose of the original motion first? Are we allowed amendment?
No, you would take up the amendment first.
Okay. Okay, as the maker of the amendment, Councilmember Best Campbell.
So I'm asking to make this amendment first before a second amendment spoiler that I'm going to ask for. I still believe that we need a stair step. We need to have a minimum standard of development that is the ante to the pot. If you would like to play the game, you put in your ante. Every other city says 10% affordability across the board if you build, period. What we're offering here is you give the minimum that every other city demands for free, but we're giving an eight-year tax exemption on it. So what I'm asking for is we increase that number to 10, from 10% to 15% now in anticipation of a second motion that I'm going to make. Because as it sits now, we're limiting the amount of affordable units we can get. We're capping out. This is it. This is all the affordable units that we are willing to give the community. And we're going to give a hefty tax break to make it happen. And I still believe we should follow the good example of our neighboring cities and have a minimum standard. Put your money in the pot. We want affordable housing. This is how we, as a city, make it happen. You have the base level of buy-in, just as every other city has. They can go somewhere else and build, and they would have these standards. But somehow in Woodinville, we have lower standards? Why? I'm not going to lower the standards so that we can have a developer come in. We are a desirable place to build. We have good relationships with our developers. We can make this work. So I think that changing from 10% to 15% is a very modest, yet appropriate first step for coming up with a plan. I don't believe we should come back and amend this 1,000 times. Because every time we come back to amend, that's one more development agreement that slips away and one more opportunity to lose affordable housing. So why don't we do it right and not speed it up because a developer has asked us to speed it up for their benefit? I don't sit here for the benefit of developers. I sit here for the benefit of the citizens who put me here. They have asked for affordable housing. So my job is to take the tough road and say, how do we get there? And this is my line in the sand. It is asking developers to do what every other cities do, which is put 10% minimum affordability. So I am in favor of changing it from 10% to 15% because I want to do it right the first time.
Any other questions, comments?
So I did some investigation on that claim of the people, the cities around us. And I reached out to Bothell as an example, because that keeps coming up as a prime example. So I reached out to Bothell elected officials over there. And yes, they have, in certain areas, they have a 10% mandatory. They have developed no affordable housing under that 10% mandatory. The Redmond is another one that pops up, and they have a mandatory also. But there's nuance with that. Redmond allows that with some height increase, so they get more units. They also allow market rate for every certain number of affordable units. You also get some market rate to offset some of that loss of income. So there is nuance with that. Going back to what we're doing, six, eight months ago on the books, we had no affordable housing. We had none downtown. We hadn't done anything for, since the 80s. Since then, if this is approved, we have a commitment for, on the books, we'll have 145, I think that's right, 145 affordable units. And for a city our size, that is a significant first step. And I did some math, and this might not be totally accurate, but I think it's in the ballpark. So I based my math on two-bedroom units in the area. And starting with a 65% AMI, that 65% is capped off at $1,969. That would be the cap for a two-bedroom. And as anybody, I can see people that live in Wooden Creek here will tell you that is significantly below what a two-bedroom is going for in the area. That savings for every resident will be $17,172 per year. Times 60 is $1,030,030. That is the reduction, and that's the benefit that our residents will receive under the 65% reduction. And that is also income that the developer is foregoing from having market rate. At the 85%, it's capped at $2,574. That's approximately $10,000 per year, times 60 units. And this is rough, I understand. But that's $600,000 in saving for a total of $1,630,320. So previously, we did 25 units at 50% AMI. I don't have the math for that, but you can imagine at 50%, the savings per unit is going to be significantly more. Our surrounding cities, and this is a question for, a couple of questions for the city manager. First one, how does 145 affordable units compare to our surrounding cities or comparable cities in the last six months? Further savings for the workers down the road, and I think Mrs. Ellerson talked about that. Kimberly talked about workers. We get significant sales tax in Woodinville that allows us to keep our property taxes low. Our neighbors are in the 20s and 30% in sales taxes for the operating budget. We get 58% for our sales taxes. We haven't raised our local property taxes since 2017. So to enable our workers to continue to serve our city, this allows people to not only work, but live in our city and ideally, if possible, to be able to commute without the necessary, without having a car, or certainly more affordably. And also, they'll be in a good location for public transit. Anyway, back to my question. How does, do we know roughly?
I don't have that information. I'd have to get it probably from Archer Surveying the Cities, what's been entitled in the last six months.
Okay. Well, thank you. I think the council should be proud. I think the city should be proud. We went from zero eight months ago to we're looking at 145. I'm in favor of this MFT and the idea that mandatory has created affordable units is just not accurate.
Councilmember Evans.
Thank you. I also reached out to people in the local area. So in talking with Bothell, their requirement is very different than ours. We're requiring units that are significantly the same as the other units being built. They're requiring micro apartments, which are tiny, tiny, tiny apartments. So you can jam a whole bunch of them in there. It's basically, you know, 350 square feet, maybe up to 500 square feet, that are not the same as the rest of the units in that development. So that's not the same apples-to-apples comparison. I'm also looking right now at the Redmond MFT program and in their downtown and Overlake Village residential area, because they have different MFT programs depending on where you are in the city. So if we want to look downtown to downtown, it's the exact same as here, except their first 10% on the eight-year is at 60% and we're asking for 50. So we are very similar to people in our area. And we are trying to generate the first affordable housing built here, as Mayor Millman said, since the 80s. We need to take these steps. We need to learn from those who've been around, who've already put this into place and hear what's worked to generate this demand, to generate the interest from developers. We also are looking at 19 acres of land right now that's underutilized. It's underutilized for sales tax. It's very underutilized for housing. Right now, it is not generating this money. So this is all new money, net new money to Woodinville. I know I took a look at the Mulvachs. It's a privately held company, but they have applied for some, I don't know, national designations where they've had to disclose what their annual revenues are. And the last one I could find, I think, was from 2017. It was about $16.5 million in sales. So if you think about, you know, our sales tax rate is over 10%, how much of that is coming to Woodinville? How much of that is helping each and every one of us? And then imagine that they're expanding this retail space so much more and how much more, as you know, Julie said, she was talking about doubling in revenues. Those of us on council are thinking, okay, well, that's going to double the sales tax, which only goes to improve our city. So, you know, this, again, this is the exact same MFT program as Redmond. Redmond has been very successful in generating a lot of affordable units for the area. I know people who've been able to take advantage of them, and it's been life-changing in terms of being able to live and work in the area that they want to, that they're able to walk to work, that they're able to bike to work, and that they're not having to drive hours every single day just to get to a job. Thank you.
Councilmember Best Campbell.
So I want to bring it back to the discussion here. We're not talking about a development agreement. We're talking about the multifamily tax exemption. This would apply to everyone, not just the applicant here tonight. Again, what we're missing is Bothell's program for affordability started in 2021. Does anybody remember what was going on then? Zero. We were all stuck in our homes. There was nothing built because there was nothing going on. So that is not an apples-to-apples comparison. It is not also accurate to say that Bothell only requires micro apartments. That is untrue. That is an option. That is not the only option. All of this pious talk about affordability, but we're going to keep the levels really low and we're going to make sure that we give that tax break out early. That's the gist of what we're hearing here. So voting not to increase that level to 15% so that we can have a baseline level of affordability is a dishonest argument. This is an argument that we're trying to say that this is as much affordability as this particular applicant will accept in their development agreement. Therefore, we're going to ram it through now. That's what you're hearing. So I want to show you a very crude example of what I'm talking about. This is called baseline affordability. This is 10% of the entirety of a project. Everybody is required to build this amount. In order for you to get this juicy tax bonus, you have to build extra. So you build extra. That's called baseline and extra. That's what we're talking about. That is how you create affordability. You start with mandatory, and then you give optional on top of that. This caps out our affordability. We say we settle for this affordability. We will never do anymore. This is all that we're willing to do. So let's be honest about it. Are we willing to say that we only want 10% affordability in Woodinville and we will bend over backwards to calculate 20%? Or are we going to actually follow through and do something that is unique? Woodinville is a different community. I use Bothell as a comparison. They are not a carbon copy. So why don't we do what's best for us and mandate, we want affordability? We have letters from citizens today telling us how difficult it is for them. In Greenbrier, which by the way, was built in 2006, that is our affordability. That is our mixed use. We've proven that it works there. Why don't we do that here? I don't see any reason why we don't increase that and do our part to mandate affordability. Our job is not to make developers happy. Our job is to find the perfect balance for development, but also affordability so that the people who work in our grocery stores don't commute to Kent every day, who don't drive an hour each way, spending money on gas and a time away from their children. We can find a way to give developers money back. Which, by the way, if you look at a two-bedroom unit at the 65 and 85% AMI levels and how they compare to what we currently have for rent in Wooden Creek, $2,600 a month for a two-bedroom, at 85% AMI, you would pay $2,500. That is a $100 difference in AMI. Is that really affordable? And is that as good as we can do? Because the developer gets a significant tax break in exchange for that. So if we're going to ask for something extraordinary in terms of a tax break, then the citizen should get an extraordinarily big number of affordable units because that is what people have been asking for. So to say that we're doing our part, we've created, I'm not satisfied with where we are. Let's look ahead. I'm not happy to look backwards and say, we're good enough. Woodinville is better than good enough. We deserve to push and ask for more. We are a beautiful, desirable place to live. And regardless of income level, you should have the ability to live here. And this council should have the guts to stand up and say, we're going to do more, not the status quo and not the bare minimum.
Councilmember Arndt.
Thank you. Strictly looking at the MFT program, I want to bring it back to our Housing Action Plan, which we, as a council, spent a lot of time. We spent a lot of time reaching out into our community to go through our Housing Action Plan. And one of our first action steps that we approved in that plan was modifying our MFT. At the time that we did our Housing Action Plan, we did not have a huge groundswell of community output saying that they wanted inclusionary mandatory affordability. That's certainly something that I have championed, but it hasn't necessarily been something that we have seen from our community in a huge grassroots number, which is why we, as a council, chose to tackle the MFT program first. Because at the time that we went through our Housing Action Plan, that seemed to be the priority of our community members and the way that we could go about generating more affordable units in a way that was gradual and that met with the will of the community and the desires of our community members as we saw them reported back in that Housing Action Plan. I think there is, of course, an affordability problem, and we do want to generate more affordable units in our community. However, city manager, can you clarify what parts of the city this MFT program apply to?
Currently, the target area that has to be designated by council is the CBD district.
Okay. So this program is not the minbar across our entire city. It is, in fact, a program that has been in place specifically for only a portion of our downtown.
Correct.
So we, as a council, as we are talking about mandating affordability, we still have a lot of the city left to discuss. A lot of the city where we can have an alternate MFT program, where we can have mandatory inclusionary zoning there. I mean, we, as a council, are taking steps. And we're trying to take them in the order of the feedback that we got from our community in our Housing Action Plan. I think it is responsible of us to stick to what we said we'd do when we passed our Housing Action Plan, when we spent months getting community feedback on what our residents wanted. Yes, we have a goal, but to let the perfect get in the way of progress is not helpful for anyone.
Councilmember Taylor.
Question for city manager. Are we required to do a development agreement right away? Is this something that we're, under law, we have to do and we're obligated to do tonight?
No, a development agreement is at the discretion of council.
So a developer could continue to build per existing code? That's required by law, right?
Without a development agreement and the different provisions of it, yes. If that was not part of the conversation, the developer could build a code today.
Okay. With that, I'm in support of changing the affordable units and also that we should probably take some time and take a look at what the other cities have in place and try to get something in there. Because we don't have a lot of extra space. We're five and a half square miles as a city. Our downtown isn't that large, and we've pretty much covered with development already. So we should probably get that nailed down. I don't see a lot of extra space for further large deployments. And like I said, this is 12 years we're giving up tax revenue. And we talked about last time, we're also taking out of the schools. We're kind of taking away funding that they anticipate per the McCleary agreement. We're just not collecting it. And so therefore, they don't get the natural increase of growth for funding the schools. So yeah, I'm going to vote yes with the amendment.
Councilmember Evans.
Thank you. Remind me, city council?
Remind me, City Council or City Manager, our percentage, so of all the sales tax collected for the city, we get six to six and a half percent, correct? So the cost to the citizens of Woodinville of this MFT program is primarily borne by the state, because this is a state-driven program that the state has decided, hey, we want to incentivize affordable housing, and so we're willing to take a big cut, because the state gets a big cut of our property tax and the county as well, that they're helping to support this, correct?
If I understand the question correctly, so the, the amount of impact, because, let me think about this. The city share of the impact is approximately that 7% of the total collected. If, I'm not sure.
Right, correct.
Okay.
And we're currently not collecting any residential property taxes on this property, correct?
On the, that's correct.
And we're talking about two of the five, since, since we are talking about the MFT program, but it keeps coming back to this current development, we're talking about two of the five that would get this exemption, not the entire project, correct?
As currently proposed, correct.
Okay. So I think the reason that it's really important to put that out there is that not, the entire development isn't going to be residential. We have, as we saw earlier today, a big chunk of it's going to be hotels, which also brings additional tax revenue, lodging and, and, and travel taxes. And that brings right back to Woodinville, because the LTAC dollars can only be used for promoting Woodinville. It can only be used for events that bring people to Woodinville or for getting the word out about Woodinville. It's what supports our Celebrate Woodinville, for example. So these are important things to put out there, that we're not doing a giveaway. We are really, really thinking through what makes the most sense here. Additionally, this isn't the only area to develop. I know as a council, and as we went through our, our housing action plan, we talked about potentially rezoning the areas, like where Hagan is. They can go up. They have a lot of space. We're talking about rezoning the areas along where the new linear park will be, where the trail will be, to be mixed use. And so we have other areas where it's not like Woodinville is full, and this is our only bite at the apple. We have lots of areas to look at, and if we take these little steps, we can learn what works, what doesn't work, what brings us the benefits and helps our citizens. Finally, I just want to say I'm on the Wooden Creek website right now, and for two-bedroom, two-bath, they go anywhere from $2,650 all the way up to $3,425. So there is a range, and the, the, the ones that are less expensive aren't as available as the ones that are more expensive. So I just wanted to put that out there as well. Thank you.
I, I have a question, City Manager. So when I reached out to the Bothell City Council to get a better understanding when all this talk of mandatory, I think we talked, I believe you talked to the City Manager over in Bothell. Can you, can you kind of explain how that conversation went?
Yes, I, I think it mirrors the conversation you have with the elected counterparts there as well, that to his understanding at this moment, there has not been any utilization of the mandatory program. I think, and I, I didn't dig into why that is with him. I think he shared that a good amount of the development that we're seeing under construction now was permitted prior to this program being put in place. There are also, as I dug into the Bothell code a little bit, some, I think, some important nuances to, to note, some of those being that there are ways to circumvent that mandatory affordable housing in their code. One of them simply, and, and that's not what's proposed in here, but one of the Bothell code, you can pay to get out of it. You pay into their, their housing, affordable housing fund. You can provide affordable housing off-site, or you can, and this is language from their code, you can negotiate with them on less affordable housing at deeper affordability levels and, and similar conversations. So there's, it's, I think, the 10% is the goal, but there's ways around that, and that can be modified. So he hadn't seen a lot of, on that. And then similarly with the MFT program, on the voluntary MFT program, has not seen utilization to his knowledge at this point.
And as our negotiator, subject matter expert, City Manager, is this, is this a pretty good deal for the city?
I, I mean, obviously, the council's got to be the decision-maker there. I think this, if it spurs affordable housing, which council has enumerated as a goal, I think furthers that goal, and that, that could be one way to describe this as, as a, as a good program.
Thank you. And Councilmember Arnt stated that this is in our housing action plan. I'd also like to further add that this is in our strategic vision for Woodinville to make the downtown area as a very vibrant, walkable downtown. And this project does that better than any of the other projects that I can think of. So I'm, I'm very much in support of this. I'd also like to point out that when we had the, our first affordable at the East Rail project, council, we had a six-one votes, five-two, I'm not sure what it was. Councilmember Beth Campbell voted against that for our first affordable and also, also opposed additional height on this project, which allows the density that we're talking about. And one point was made earlier as far as Green Partners could build to code, existing code, and that wouldn't have to include any affordable housing. So the benefits that we're getting for this project are numerous, and for that reason, I oppose the motion, and I'm in favor of keeping it as what staff recommended. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none? All in favor? Actually, can you restate the motion?
Point of order, I think there was an amended motion that we have to vote on first.
That's, that's the motion I was referring to. Can you restate the motion, please?
I'm, I am having amended motion to change the eight-year MFT of affordable units to qualify from 10% to 15%.
Let's have a roll call vote on that, please.
Councilmember Evans?
No.
Councilmember Rob Stello?
No.
Councilmember Beth Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Millman?
No.
Councilmember Arnt?
No.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes, I'm for affordability.
And Deputy Mayor Randolph?
No.
Motion fails, five to two. Do I have a new motion?
I'd like to make another amended motion, amendment to the main motion. I'd like to add a, a general land use requirement for all new multifamily residential buildings in the CBD, requiring at least 10% of the units to be affordable at 80% AMI.
I have a motion second. Councilmember Beth Campbell.
I stated before about the base level of affordability. It's been said that I have voted against affordability, which is, of course, it's a gross overstatement, but there are a lot of gross things in this world. I vote against projects because I don't believe they do enough, and I believe they're fast-tracked. This is going to be our next agenda item, the fourth development agreement in as many in, in a year, in one year in tiny Woodinville. I think that utilizing this tax exemption requires thought, but it also requires us to drive a hard bargain. I think minimum affordability is what we need. This is the minimum affordability. You'll have to forgive the legos here. Minimum affordability. Everybody has to build this before you get a tax break. It's only when you provide more that you get more. This makes sense to me. This makes sense to everybody else. In order to make money, you have to spend money. This is, this is the public benefit that people have been asking for. To say that people asked for a tepid response to the housing prices, yes, but people want housing, but they were very tepid, so we need to dip our toe into affordability. Absolutely not. When there's a fire, you don't take a water dropper and gently drop, well, people wanted us to be measured. No. This is a time when we can act. I don't think anyone is going to fault the city for taking action on affordability and asking developers to pay a little bit extra of their profits for affordability. What's not being said, for an MFT of this size, if we're talking about this 10% blanket affordability, which is the same as what we're being offered in the next item, these are equivalent, why is it that 20% affordability in two units, which is the same as 10% in four, gets to have a tax benefit that's worth, I don't know, $2.5 million rough dollars of tax revenue a year? No, that tax revenue does not go to the city, but that tax savings goes somewhere. Who does it go to? It doesn't go to the city. It doesn't go to the state. It goes to the developer. So they get to pocket $2.5 million a year for 128 units. That seems outrageous. Do the math. How much per month profit, because of the tax exemptions that we provide, will these developers get? $140,000, $150,000 a month, a month, for these affordable units? That's a shocking amount of money, considering the affordable level we're talking about is 65 and 85. Now, I know that we are never going to be able to mandate affordability with developers. The whole point of this is that we all give and we all take. This baseline level of 10% affordability is great. It puts everyone on an even playing field, and when you have projects that are going to be wildly successful, they can have the option of adding more affordability and taking advantage of a really outstanding tax program the state has provided. But that tax program is very lucrative. So because the developer will be pocketing that money, not the city, not the state, the developer, we have every right and responsibility to ask for a little bit more. And I don't think that a 10% at 80% AMI is too great of an ask. I think that is incredibly modest. And I frankly think if we're so concerned about the nuances of the code and ways to get around it, we should table this. If we're so concerned, why are we rushing it through tonight? If we're coming up with all the reasons why it can't work, then maybe we should tap the brakes, and maybe we should do a deeper dive into this and really understand why we're staying at this level. Are we staying at this level because it's the right thing to do or because a developer is asking us to fast-track? I'd like to know which it is. I'd rather do it right the first time and not get into a Faustian bargain that we can't get out of.
Mr. Mayor, I, I bet I would know what he's going to say, but Mr. Ganson has his hand raised as well.
Mr. Ganson?
Yes, thank you. A couple of legal concerns. If I heard the amending motion correctly, it sounds like a motion to amend the city's development regulations, and so I see two issues with that. One, we have a single subject rule for ordinances, and this is an ordinance dealing with a, a tax exemption program. This is not a development regulation ordinance. So that topic would be misplaced in this ordinance and jeopardize the entire ordinance's validity. Second, if it, if I'm, if I'm correct in interpreting the motion as a development regulation amendment, that, that would require a whole public participation process, public hearing presumably conducted by the Planning Commission. So it would be premature to be adopting that at this point, and I hope I did not misunderstand the nature of the motion.
So, oh, I'm sorry, is anybody else?
I was going to say, point of order, can you have the maker of the motion confirmed? Mr. Ganson?
Councilmember Beth Campbell, can you restate your motion so we can get a, a ruling on that, please?
Sure. So my motion is meant to exemplify that we need more time on this. I recognize that there are development code changes that are required in order to get mandatory affordable minimums. It's meant to underscore the fact that this is not the only tool, that there are a lot of interconnected portions that we have.
Just, I'm sorry.
So I, I am getting to my point, Mr. Mayor.
You're, you're making a speech. Please restate your motion.
I am getting to my point, which is I withdraw the motion because my point was made, and Mr. Ganson reminded us that it is beyond this code.
Thank you. So the main motion is on the table at this point? Do we have any more discussion at this point? Okay, let's have a roll call vote on the main motion, please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rob Stello?
Yes.
Councilmember Beth Campbell?
Not as presented, no.
Mayor Millman?
Yes.
Councilmember Arnt?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
No.
Deputy Mayor Randolph?
Yes.
Motion passes five to two. Thank you. Next business item, approval of resolution 623, Green Partners Development Agreement. Mr. Grumbach.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Just let me go ahead and bring up my presentation here first. All right. Take a second here. All right, as mentioned, this is a resolution related to the Green Partners LLC's development agreement. What I plan to do tonight, some of this has actually already been covered, so I may end up going through some of these slides a little bit quicker, and I didn't necessarily want to keep going over everything, but I think a lot of stuff is already on the table. So the main focus is kind of a little bit of the history. Want to go over that and the process that's been done so far for this development agreement. And then a quick review of the project proposal. That's one of the things you've kind of heard in multiple meetings now, so I'll probably go through those slides fairly quickly, but just kind of a reminder. Talk about what's changed, which is primarily around that Exhibit K and the public benefits, and then we'll get into the recommended motions. And as always, as I kind of go through this, feel free, if there's questions, you want to stop me, feel free to ask those questions. We also do have Jason here, that if some of these questions I can't answer, they're getting into the specifics about the project. He's also available here to help answer any of those questions. So real quick first, history review process. We started this out with the application that we received, and we took it to the Planning Commission for a study session back in April. One of the main things that came out of that study session with them was that they, was a desire for more affordable housing. Planning Commission knew that we were going to bring in this to the council the following week, so they just, they basically suggested, you know, when you go to council, that this would probably be something that was brought up. So council got us, had a presentation on this at the May 2 meeting, and we talked a lot more detail about the affordable housing, as well as this high-quality furniture improvement. And during that meeting, I also went through a lot of the terms of the agreement and also about some of the special provisions surrounding, like how they're going to be doing surface park temporarily, as well as some of the phases and some of the specifics and stuff on it. Anyway, we, we came out of that session, went back to Green Partners, and went into greater discussions with them on trying to get more affordable housing and finding out and figure out what could work. So those changes were made. That was then presented at the Planning Commission. There was a public hearing at the May 24 meeting, and now that the Planning Commission did make a recommendation to approve. There were, it was based on some of the original stuff, but then with the revised affordable housing. They also included revisions about this high-quality furniture, which I'll go into this detail a little bit more in my later slides here. But they also wanted to add this requirement for construction to be done at LEED Gold and higher for the buildings in this as part of supporting our climate action plans that I think you're going to have action on later today. And then also, they wanted to include a requirement for community gardens, at least a minimum 5,000 square feet. You heard a little bit of that talked about earlier by Green Partners in the presentation, and I'll talk a little bit more about that also in a later slide, where their proposal was for the community gardens. Green Partners has come back and suggested these garden programs. All right, so again, just going to touch base on the project proposal. So I'll start out, because I went and wanted to take a look at this and kind of get a comparison. So currently out there on the Moback site, there's about 80,000 square feet of existing retail and office space and about 120,000 square feet of greenhouse space on the 19.17 acres. They're going to be demolishing all of that, and this is some of the pictures. You can see some of the buildings and stuff that'll get demolished. All of that's going to be leveled, and they're going to then build new, new upon that. So the project will be done in phases, and they're proposing up to 1,210 multifamily dwellings, 370,000 square feet of commercial space, including new Moback store, as well as 30,000 square feet of greenhouse. In the past, we, we kind of talked about how there was 400,000 square feet of commercial. That does include the greenhouse, but I thought I would break that out, because comparing to like what's being torn right now, this greenhouse to greenhouse, I wanted to kind of make a comparison between the two. Additionally, there's, it's going to be a bunch of infrastructure improvements being done to support the project. That includes completing the 138th Avenue Northeast and Northeast 173rd Street. They will be contributing funds to the remaining segments of 138th Avenue Northeast and 138th 171st Roundabout. You may recall Wooden Creek Village is doing the southern part of 138th and also doing the roundabout. They'll be contributing in, to that project and helping to pay for that. They'll also be constructing 139th Avenue Northeast there. That is fully at their cost, and they will be then constructing these private streets, also fully at their cost, 137th Avenue Northeast, as well as Northeast 174th. And then there's going to be these furniture improvements to 175th that are going to need to be done. So this is just kind of showing you a kind of breakdown of the phases, tying up the different breakdown as far as much of the square footage that's going to be built, the number of units, office, commercial. We've already had quite a bit of presentations, so I wasn't going to go over all this in detail. If there's any questions about this, I'm happy to answer those for you. But just note again that this is being broken down into five different phases. phases. I also wanted to mention part of this, too, is there's an urban stream designation. Kind of talked about this a little bit before. Wooden Creek is a fish-bearing stream. Wooden Creek Village has already had this urban stream and did a whole bunch of restorations as part of their project. Green Partners will continue with this and will be doing enhancements and improvements to along the buffer area in here. And that's, actually, they're planning to pull some of this also into some of their garden plans. One of the things they've talked about is setting up programs so that kids and others can go down there to the creek and learn more about, you know, some of our ecological systems and stuff like that. So it's kind of, their idea is to kind of turn this, not only enhancing the creek, but also trying to turn this into a chance to educate the public and folks that are interested in the environment and ecological stuff. So this next slide, I'm gonna kind of start talking about where some of the changes came about and talk about the public benefits and some of the breakdowns on that, since that's been kind of one of the main interests as we've been going through and dealing with the negotiations on this development agreement. So as I mentioned, one of the things, this was something council had asked for at their study session about doing additional enhancements to Northeast 175th Street. They already had a requirement to do furniture improvements, and so they're going to be doing additional improvements beyond that. Minimum cost of those additional improvements will be at least $150,000, and that's written into the development agreement. They'll have a requirement, this is not necessarily part of the development agreement, but other than that they're vesting into the park impact fees that we have adopted today. But if the full project does get bailed out, there'll be roughly about $3.8 million collected. I would note this is more about mitigation necessary than specifically public benefits, but we take the $3.8 million that is used to help build parks that will support this project as well as the community as a whole. So that's what we end up doing with those park impact fees. They will also be doing extending the Wooden Creek. Village has a trail along Wooden Creek. They'll also be extending that through their property as well. And there is not any proposal for reimbursement from the park impact fees on that. Additionally, with the construction of 138th Avenue Northeast, the work that they're gonna be doing, as well as the roundabout, they will be getting traffic impact fees, but it's, they're gonna still be paying for costs above and beyond those traffic impact fees that they get reimbursement on. So roughly estimated about $2 to $4 million that they will be paying towards those improvements. They'll also, as I mentioned, be absorbing the full cost of 139th, as well as those private roads. Now, one of the things we talked about, and I have another slide, I'll talk a little bit more detail about the affordable dwelling units, breaking that down. But we did kind of do a rough estimate about what the difference between the market rate and what the affordable rate, what that might actually be in terms of cost annually for the two phases. And it comes out, and this is just a rough estimate, it could be a little bit more, it could be a little bit higher, because there's so many variables, it's hard to put an exact number on it. But it's roughly gonna be around $1.5 million annually on that. Additionally, talked about the garden education program in lieu of the planning commission's recommendation for community gardens. Have a slide, I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. And then also I mentioned the LEED Gold. This is a qualifying incentive. This isn't specifically to the development agreement, although they are obligating themselves that they will do. They say we're planning to do this anyway, so they are obligating themselves to do this. But this is actually going towards what they're, you know, to get their development bonuses. You may recall from our development regulations, our zoning regulations, we have development bonuses that require public incentives for floor area ratio, as well as for height. And so this is one of the items that they can use towards qualifying for some of those bonuses. And so they are committed to doing this as one of those. They will also have to do additional public incentives for the development bonuses for zoning. This is in addition to LEED. They'll have some other items that are in the listed there. And a lot of that's actually outlined in that Exhibit K for you. The total amount, because there is a minimum amount that they have to spend on this, and it's, I think we put into the development agreement, we were estimating around 3.5 million. But I was going back into some of the numbers that Jason gave us on the building permit valuations, which is what the minimum spending on those benefits is based on. And they're gonna be building about $450 million worth of new buildings and construction as part of this project with all five phases roughly. At least that's the estimate right now with the current valuations. That would generate at least a minimum of around 3.5 to 4.5 million in those development bonuses spending that they'd have, a minimum that they'd have to spend on that. And actually, it'd be a little bit higher in order to do for both of those. So that's just a little bit of a breakdown of some of the public benefits. Talk a little bit more about the affordable housing, because this has been one of the big topic items. And I think everybody may have a good understanding of that, but I just want to kind of go over it here again real quick, just to make sure we're all thinking the same thing. So they are proposing, the development agreement would mandate that they would have to provide at least ten percent of their total through all five phases would have to be affordable units. And that means it's a minimum, comes out to be at least a minimum of 121 units. Now, in practice, because they want to be able to take advantage of the MFTE program, this new one that council just passed here earlier, they'll actually be needing to provide more than that, because each, they're proposing to do this with two different separate phases. And each of those phases, in order to have the 20%, would actually generate, if they do it for two and three, which is up here, I noted as Lot Two and Lot Three, because they'll have each phase on an individual lot, you actually end up with a minimum of 128 affordable units. So that would be, in order to be able to get qualified for the MFTE program, and also to meet the minimum requirements outlined in the DA, they would actually need to produce at least 128 units. Again, that will be subject to what their final total are. So for example, if Phase Five, they decide to add multifamily to it, because that is a potential option, then they would have to provide even additional affordable units if they were to do something along those lines. Or if they wanted to increase the number of residential units on any of the other phases, then the number of affordable units would also go up as a result of that. So I've heard a little bit of the conversation in the previous conversation about the taxes and stuff on it. I just wanted to note for everybody, for the 12-year multi-tax exemption program, if they qualify for that, it'll affect 640 of the dwelling units in this project. That means then the remaining 370,000 square feet of commercial and office, 30,000 square feet of greenhouse, and the remaining 569 dwelling units would actually be at the fully taxed rate. So when we talked about the impacts as far as taxes and stuff on it, note that there's actually gonna be more intense development on the site that would be qualifying for the taxes. And then obviously, when the 12-year program expires, then the remaining 640 units would then be fully taxed at that point. Next slide here, just again, talk a little bit about the community gardens program. As I mentioned, planning commission did include a recommendation for a minimum 5,000 square feet of community gardens. When we talked with Green Partners about this, one of the things is they were trying to figure out how that was going to fit in, because you can see from the picture here over to the right, which this is actually one of the exhibits in the development agreement. It shows you that they're gonna actually, even though they are gonna be incorporating a lot of green throughout along the roads and stuff like that, there's not really a lot of space to get the level of development that they're proposing. There's not really necessarily a lot of space to put community gardens, a 5,000-square-foot community garden in there. A lot of the green space that they are providing, they'll have involved with both the landscaping that our codes require. They also have, a good chunk of it will be in the stream buffer area. That's at least 46,000 square feet for that stream buffer area. And although they've indicated 50,000 square feet, the landscaping requirements actually may actually bump the 50,000 square feet of green space may actually end up being more than that, because we have a minimum 10% required, and that's based on the net developmental area of the site. So that final number will be determined when the project's completed, but the number could be a little bit higher. Additionally, a lot of their other open space, we have requirements for plazas, we have requirements for pedestrian-oriented space, and other requirements that are triggered by our design standards, as well as our development regulations, that they'll also be providing for. So again, those things are kind of throughout the entire project, and like, kind of affect the ability to do this, trying to do like a 5,000-square-foot community garden. So that's why they did propose the green, these garden programs. And you heard a little bit more about that in the presentation earlier today. So that kind of, well, I'll mention this. So the staff report from, planning commission staff report from April 26 contains the rest of the stuff, about the 10 years, and there's a lot of the other pieces. Most of the other things we talked about previously are pretty much the same in the current one. We did make some minor changes that just had to be updated, like to add the planning commission's meeting and a couple of just minor edit stuff. But otherwise, most of the things are what the council had seen previously at their April meeting. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. That is the proposed resolution, or motion for the resolution, although there is also an alternative one that's also in your city staff report as well.
Councilmember Best Campbell?
Could you refresh my memory? I know that it's a three-way deal for the roundabout. What is the city's portion that we're paying into the roundabout? Because I know we're doing it with Wooden Creek and with Green Partners. What is the city paying for that one?
Brendan, do you remember? I think it was like 80-some percent?
I think you're approximately right. It's in, it's one of the exhibits. I just need to find it. It has the infrastructure.
I'm thinking it's like 80. No, I think it actually may even be under 80%. Because Wooden Creek Village had like 12% and, or 11 or 12%, and Molebacks, I think, had 12 or 13% or something like that, would be responsible for the cost on that. So somewhere around in that range is what their share. So we would have the remaining, so yeah, I guess that'd be about in the 70-some percent range.
70% of what? What's the X? That, I mean, again, it's, I know the construction.
Total cost of the.
Right, but is that, are we, is it, is it $5 million for a roundabout that size going? I mean, I know it's.
That's our estimate in the CIP. That was our estimate for it. The actual cost will be something different, but that's our estimated cost based on what we put into the CIP.
Okay. And then you made a comment about there's no intention to ask for park impact fee refunds. Can you explain a little bit about how those refunds work, how long we have to hold them before we can spend them, and how long they have to ask for it back? What are the rules around that?
Yeah. So I mean, Wooden Creek Village was an example where they actually, as part of their development agreement and as part of the trail, they have in there, although they have not requested this, but they had in there as an ability, because it was put down as a system improvement on their property, that they would be eligible to receive credits on their park impact fees. And Green Partners is not included as a system improvement. It only went through the Wooden Creek Village. So when they pay the park impact fees that are vested into the development agreement, there wouldn't be any credits that they could earn. But if it was a system improvement that had been included in our capital improvement plan, then they could potentially have requested credit for any system improvement that they do. It's the same thing like with roads. The same thing can also happen with parks. Not the same with schools, because it's not the same thing. But with parks and with schools, that's, or excuse me, with parks and with transportation, they can request credits if it's a system improvement.
So because they aren't doing any improvements in parks that we have on our CIP, we have full access to that money immediately. So that money that we're gonna get, they can't request a refund. In the code, it said something about you have a year to request or that they're eligible for a refund. Are we going to have any of those year-long waits? Or is it because they aren't gonna do any system improvements that, and we don't have anything that we're going to add?
There's not a system, they're not doing a system improvement with their trail. That's not a system improvement. So they're not doing any park system improvements. So there would be no credits to be earned on it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, I, I think that this is an amazing opportunity for Woodinville. We have, we have the opportunity to get many things that most developments don't have, and many people that come from other jurisdictions would, are, would and are and will be very envious of. One of them is 175, 175th, where we get a significant stretch of 175th that's gonna have above required and above standard street frontage. That's our main drag through town. I think that's significant. One of the, one of the biggest concerns that I hear from citizens is other areas that they don't like some of the development. So we get to avoid some of the public concerns on what I've heard over and over again in other developments. We get increased sales tax. I went over this earlier, but we get a significant amount of operating revenue from sales tax. This, this will dramatically contribute to that, which allows us to keep property taxes down in the city and allows us to do other things for our infrastructure, roads, trails, parks. The park impact fee, we just talked about, 3.8 million. That's a significant amount of money that'll go to many of the needed improvements in our parks. It was talked about earlier, we have two phases of the five. The rest will see increased property value, increased sales taxes. And at year 13, all of this will be fully taxed. The community garden and demonstration spaces, I think that's a wonderful idea. I talked to the master gardeners about opportunities there, and I don't think that we are going to incorporate that with, with that benefit. LEED Gold, I was pleasantly, I didn't know, and I was pleasantly surprised. I knew that there had been a living roof proposed in the past. I was happy to see that we're putting solar on, on the project. I think that's great. You're gonna have a wide stretch of southern-facing roof. That's something that hasn't been done in Woodinville, along with, I might be wrong, but I haven't seen another living roof in, in Woodinville. The traffic impact fees that we talked about, that's another benefit to this. We get construction of two roads and a roundabout. That's something that we currently do not have the capacity to do ourselves. And this is another first for Woodinville, where we are finally building out the grid roads that haven't, have been discussed for a long time. Well, they're happening now, and we're doing that with the construction from developers. And I think that's a big benefit to this. And lastly, I'd like to say, I'm very happy and excited if we can pass this, that we get to keep Molebacks in Woodinville. Molebacks is Woodinville. It's been here a long time, 67 years. I look forward to, I would encourage us to keep Molebacks here for another 67 years. It's an institution in Woodinville, and I do not want to be on a council that allowed that institution to go to some other city. So I, I support the recommended motion.
Point of order, there is no motion in front of us at the time.
I, I support the recommended motion on the screen. Councilmember Evans?
Thank you. You know, one of the things that downtowns around the country are dealing with is people leaving. People leaving because they're concrete jungles that don't have open green space. They don't have a locally-owned core business that is anchoring the community, that is bringing people around. They don't have a walkable area that goes to all the necessities you need, doctors, dentists, food with, you know, either restaurants or grocery stores, parks, trails. This development brings all that to Woodinville. And as we've said earlier in the council meeting, Woodinville really does run on sales tax. Cities around the entire state are jealous of the amount of sales tax that we are able to have per capita here, because it gives our city the necessary funds that we need to continue to operate without having to jack up everybody's property tax rates every single year. That has a direct impact on businesses, because property taxes impact what they have to charge. That has a direct impact on renters, because property taxes impact what their rent needs to be. And it has a direct impact on homeowners, because, because homeowners have to pay their property taxes as well. So bringing more business, more, doubling the retail space, and having this beautiful garden within a city, I can only imagine that the people who live there who have affordable housing, the people who live there who pay market-rate housing, the businesses who decide to establish themselves there, the, the people who take advantage of the, the trails and the open green space, it, this is a benefit to all of Woodinville. And I fully support this. I think it's going to really become a regional attraction beyond just buying things at Molebacks, which it already is a regional attraction. But to be able to come and see this, and I know, I went to the Chamber luncheon a couple months ago, where Julie was presenting this, and she mentioned at the time that this development is going to be able to, to capture the rainwater that will be able to water the greenhouses nine months out of the year. Just the impact on not having to use our city water, but being able to really use the resources because of the, the design is impactful. And I can only imagine that the University of Washington is going to be using this as an example, not just for people here in the state, but probably internationally, to say, look what is possible. Look what you can do, and look how this creates a sustainable environment for business, for living, and for the community. So for that reason, I'm very much in favor of the recommended motion on the screen.
Any other questions, comments? Councilmember Best Campbell?
So my appreciation for this project is separate from my job up here on the dais.
So my appreciation for this project is separate from my job up here on the dais. My job up here on the dais is not to fall in love with the project that they're presenting us, which is beautiful, which I appreciate the hard work that has gone into it. I appreciate the vision that they have. But my job sitting up here is not to be part of the appreciation society. I have to, I have to be critical of it. My job is to say, "We could do better, and there are things that we can add, there are things that we can change, there are things that can be done better so that both sides are coming to an agreement here." Yes, there are fantastic parts of this project, and of course, everybody loves Mulback's. But I'm not here to argue about whether or not Mulback's should stay in town. Of course, they should stay in town. My concerns are around what the people in Woodinville expect to see in this development. And I have heard loud and clear that affordable housing is a big deal. I have heard that there are ways that we can work together to make this happen. What I also hear is there are threats that Mulback's would pull the plug on the project if we pushed affordability. I don't find that to be a good-faith negotiation. I see the crane on the property right now. I think if we would come to the table and we have an honest discussion and not go with brinksmanship, we could come up with a better option here. I am in favor of the project if and only if it meets the requirements of what I hear from my community. My community, I don't go to Chamber luncheons. I go to my neighborhood. I talk to the people. And what I hear is affordability is a concern for them. I think that we could have done better on this development agreement. I think that we could have taken our time coming up with, with a better tax structure. But unfortunately, I look at this project and look at it as a missed opportunity, just as I saw the Main Street property as a missed opportunity. We've seen four development agreements since last August, four. And we are talking about two thousand additional units that have come because of it. And you have to ask yourself, all of a sudden, we become a desirable place? Woodinville's always been desirable. It's because this council doesn't take the hard vote and say, "Yes, we're eighty-five percent there. Let's just go a little bit farther, and let's ask for a little bit more," and really do what it is that the people are asking for. And I just haven't seen that yet, and it disappoints me, because this is a great project that could be out of this world. And it really could benefit both the businesses and the community. But right now, the scale is tipped towards the businesses and towards the developers. And I, I can't in good conscience support my community by saying, "Yeah, they get all these tax breaks, but," and have to sell it. They should know on their face that this is a good deal, and I don't think we're there yet. And it breaks my heart, because this could have been great. This could have meant so much more to this community, and people would have bought in and loved it. But instead, we're at a point where people say, "Do we need another twelve hundred units clogging up our roads?" And that's sad. And that really, I, I think Mulback's deserves better. I think that Woodinville deserves better. So I think on all fronts, this disappoints and saddens me, that I have to vote no on this one, because I just don't think it is good enough for the people who elected me to sit in this seat.
Deputy Mayor Randolph.
Mr. City Manager, can you clarify if we, or, Mr. Grandaw, could, could you clarify whether or not we actually get affordable housing in this agreement?
The development agreement does include ten percent of the total would be at affordable rates.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that we are getting affordable housing with this agreement. And the other thing that gets glossed over a little bit, or we miss it, we're giving, giving away tax for twelve years? A twelve-year exemption? Is that, is that the?
They're, they're, in order to make the project work, the twelve-year MFTE is what they were, is what they would be seeking.
Okay.
They do sell the option for the eight percent also, but they're seeking the twelve.
Okay. And how long are those affordable units required to be there?
I believe our code requires for rentals to be in perpetuity.
Okay. Thank you.
I got, I have one more thing that I want to go over that's been mentioned. So there's been talk of, of school impact fees. And, Mr. City Manager, can you kind of go over that? Because I think there's some misunderstanding of how the school impact fees work.
Point of clarification, not impact fees. Impact fees are different than taxes.
That, that's not a point of order. It's not well-taken. City Manager, can you talk about the school impact fees in relation to this? And if, and what, how the city pays the school district? And, and give a little gloss over on the taxes that we will receive in this project?
On the school impact fees, those, this development agreement does not vest school impact fees. It would vest the park and the transportation impact fees, but it does not vest to the school impact fees, which are determined at the time of issuance of the permit. Currently, at the school district's direction and request, request, and with the consent of council, which hands are kind of tied, because they can't levy more than what the school district can prove that it requires. The current school impact fees are zero for a multifamily project. So if, if that doesn't change over the life of this project, then this project would, would pay no school impact fees. And again, that's at the request of the school district, who has to, as I mentioned last time, provide an analysis every year for the council to consider and justify a request for impact fees from different types of development. Its most recent one, and the one that the council agreed and adopted to, showed that there wasn't enough demand being generated from multifamily projects to justify through the formula that they have to run these, these analysis through, collecting impact fees from a multifamily project.
So just encapsulate, this, this project is not going to have a negative impact on, on the school district?
It will not pay, it will not lessen the amount of impact fees paid to the school district. On the property tax question, this, just like the city, the school district and any taxing jurisdiction levies an amount to collect. That amount's going to be collected, whether it comes from this project or any other property in the taxing jurisdiction.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Taylor.
So just real quick on that, that's seven percent roughly goes to the city. The, the city collects tax, and about sixty percent goes to the school district. And a portion of that also goes to sound transit, I believe. I think we're all in that. And we're all paying for transportation, and that's one thing that I don't see this resolving. We still have a lot of traffic downtown, and the impact that I'm hearing from neighbors is they're just deciding not to come downtown. It's getting too congested, and with all the construction that's going on, it's not a friendly place. They're starting to look at other areas. So I think we need to address transportation. This takes dollars away from the transportation pool that, that's supposed to be helping us for sound transit type of work. And that's something we're all paying. I don't know. And, and then I also agree that Mulback's is a great business. I hear people I work with all kind of have praise. They like Mulback's. But I don't think that people look at coming downtown as an architectural site. This isn't the Taj Mahal. You know, they don't come to a downtown looking for the Taj Mahal. They, they come looking to do business, get in and get out. If they can't go in and can't go out, there's, there's going to be a little bit of difficulty. So I think we need to pay attention to that. Last item. The owner equity and ownership possibilities. I talked to my daughter, you know, they're looking at moving back up into the neighborhood, but there really isn't anything for, between renters and large homeowners. There, there aren't any opportunities, and we're not developing and mandating any kind of owner equity within these large projects. And we need to see more of that.
Anyone else? Do I have a motion?
I move to approve Resolution 623 pertaining to the Green Partners Development Agreement as presented, and authorize the city manager to take all actions necessary to execute this action in spirit and letter.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Maker of the motion?
We've kind of gone round and round about this a good deal. I, I will say there are a number of positives, and no doubt, as presented, there are a number of negatives. What we have here, the positives well outweigh the negatives. The presentation regarding traffic, we are getting road work and support with that that we don't have to spend tax money on. We're getting a destination, and this started a long time ago with the city, to make this a destination. And to other council members' point, people don't go, come here to go to the Taj Mahal. The Taj Mahal was not built here. But hopefully, this project will be built here, and we will have our Taj Mahal. And that's one hope that I do have, and we'll all be looking towards this project to make sure it is a facility that everyone will approve of.
Councilmember Evans.
Thank you. So one thing that cities do need is not a Taj Mahal. What they need is an anchor that pulls in dollars, that pulls in tourists, that pulls in residents, that pulls in workforce. And that is what I see here. And the great news is, this not only does that in a beautiful, sustainable, completely in line with our, our plans that we've laid out for the city, but it also brings affordable housing that will be affordable into perpetuity. I see a lot of benefits to this. Will there be some growing pains? Will there be some traffic jams? Absolutely. That's the price of having development. And I think that this development is going really, really above to ensure that we have those grid roads laid out, that they're going to, you know, have the open green spaces so people can be walking around. And at the end, this is going to be a place that is really an anchor and will set Woodinville up for strong retail sales, for a great place to live in downtown, for our walkable city for years and years, generations to come. And again, we will have those affordable units for generations to come. Could we put all of our wishes up on our wish board and say, "We must hold off on anything until the absolute perfect, everybody's wish is granted," comes to us? We absolutely could, but nothing would happen. And the state would come in and force us to build development to meet our growth management targets. So again, I fully support this, because I think it's a beautiful addition to the city, and it's going to set us up well for all of our tax revenues to come.
Councilmember Rob Stone.
Thank you. We're so fortunate that Jens Mulback decided to keep his business here. Any normal businessman would have sold his seventeen acres and let a big developer come in and do who knows what, and he would have taken his wonderful nursery out into the country and moved it up to Malby or something. But he kept it here, and we are even more fortunate that he has been extremely thoughtful over these last eight years to propose to us truly a one-of-a-kind development that will be unique. And all of us here are going to be able to say we were a part of it. And the city of Woodinville, Woodinville will be so much the better because of it. It's, it's really wonderful, from my position, to work on a project like this where the developer is homegrown. It's not somebody who's come in from even Kirkland or Issaquah, that, that's in the region and knows the area, but somebody that's been here a lot longer than I have. And that doesn't happen very often. So I will be very honored to vote yes on this motion.
Councilmember Hart.
Thank you. As a historian, I can tell you that the only constant over time is change. And I see this project as a change to our downtown, but one that enables us to really hang on to some of the features that we value most in our downtown. Not only does it keep that anchor business, that Mulback's, that was here before the city was even incorporated, but to change the discussion a little bit, we are going to talk about our climate action plan later this evening. And so much of what is in this development lines up with our goals for climate, public education, preservation of waterways, green space, all of the water recapturing. There's so many elements of this development that align with that strategic idea of protecting our climate and our natural environment in the city, as well as all of the benefits that all of the other council members have talked about tonight. I just, I think that this is a very worthy project, and that it aligns very closely with so many of our strategic priorities in the city. And so I will be voting yes.
Councilmember Beth Campbell.
So I don't think that perfection is the enemy that we're fighting here. I think it's the unwillingness to reach for it at all. I think that we're just accepting what we have, and we're saying it's good enough. That disappoints me. I've, I've never believed that Woodinville deserves good enough. There's so much more to us than tax revenue and businesses and growth, and that's not what Woodinville is. I mean, the people are what Woodinville is. And the people have grave concerns about seventy-five feet of height in their downtown, where they've been seeing view corridors. This is a huge change for them, and yes, change is inevitable. But the changes that we see are two huge cranes on either end of one hundred and seventy-fifth. That is enormous change in a short period of time. And these developments agreements have been coming fast. They've been coming quick, and they've been approved with two meetings and one meeting with the planning commission. These are going through quick. And the citizens have not had an opportunity to digest all of this change. So what you're finding now is people do have concerns, and they are worried about the character and the soul of Woodinville. Are we outsourcing it? Are we telling businesses? Yeah, why don't you guys tell us what Woodinville is? Woodinville Planning Commission specifically asked modestly, I might add, for a five-thousand-square-foot piece of dirt where people could plant vegetables. It was a tiny ask, and it was a big deal that the planning commission asked for it. They all voted in favor of it. Instead, we're being offered with, "Well, we're going to do a sales pitch to you instead," which is not the same. A sales pitch is not community. We need projects that are community and take the people into consideration here. And I don't want to reduce Woodinville to tax revenue and how much money and how much return on investment. If we start doing that, then we might as well just incorporate into an LLC. We're here to represent the people of Woodinville. We're here to present a project that people want. And this is a project that, to me, and from what I hear, is not what people want. They could be, they could have a buy-in if they were to have a little bit more movement in terms of affordability, in terms of public space, but this is rigid. And this is being shoved down their throats. "No, no, citizens, you do want this. We're telling you you want it, therefore you do." And that concerns me, and that bothers me. And the fact that this is the fourth development agreement, and I imagine there will be many amendments to this development agreement, as every developer does, and this is as good as it's going to get. It's only going to get worse with every development agreement amendment that they offer us. And I guarantee you, there will be amendments. We're going to get less and less. This is as good as it gets. And this is as good as it gets, and I still can't support it. So any amendments are just going to make it worse. So I am not in favor of this. I am not in favor of giving Woodinville away for the opportunity to give it away again and again and again, for another development agreement. And my only request would be of the city manager, I don't know if we need to do this somewhere separately in the code, for any minor modifications that you make to the development agreement, can you add something to the consent calendar so that the public is aware of all the changes in perpetuity that's going on with future development? Is that something that we would need to vote on separate to the code? Would it need to be something in this contract? That's perhaps for another day. But this is, I don't like good enough. I don't like perfection either. Woodinville's somewhere in between. Woodinville is not perfect. It's not imperfect. It's Woodinville. And this project is too much outside of my comfort zone of Woodinville to, to support. So I am a no.
I guess I, I look at this quite, quite a bit differently. This, this project. This, this project is, I've traveled around the area and into Snoomish County, and this project is probably the premier sustainable, aesthetic, beneficial project. It is going to be the envy of everybody around us. We have top-tier growth going on and to characterize it as not good enough, I just, that just doesn't square. This is, this is, seven years, ten years from now when this is complete, I think Woodinville is going to look at this and wow. And then during that time, I can already tell you that other cities and elected officials are already saying, Wooden Creek, we want that. They're going to say the same for Mulbax, which I think has a chance to surpass on many levels of Wooden Creek, and that's saying something. So, I'm very much in support of this. We get, in the last six, eight months, we get three grid roads that have been on the books for a decade or more. And that is an improvement. We get help with a roundabout. We are putting this into conjunction. We'll get some help from this to help us with the East Rail Corridor and our new pedestrian bridge that will take its place. So, we are doing lots of improvements that coincide with this and it fits in with our strategic vision to make Woodinville a very walkable and vibrant downtown. And this is a huge component of making that happen. So, I very strongly support this. I'll be voting yes. Councilmember Bess Campbell.
I did just want to point out that this development agreement is not all get to Woodinville. We are going to be responsible for eighty percent-ish of a five million dollar roundabout. That means that takes money out of our capital improvement plan that we could have spent on other community-driven projects, and that's a mandatory spend. So, we have roundabouts that we're paying for down by Harvest. We have roundabouts that we're paying for here. That's between the two, ten million dollars we can't touch. We can't, we can't spend that on the projects the citizens have wanted because it's going to a developer project and it must be done as part of this development agreement. So, citizens, I'm sorry, this is another four, four, five million dollars that is not going to be going to the projects that you've been asking for. And that is another consideration when we make these development agreements. Think about how much of our money we're tying up in things that benefit developers at the expense of things that the citizens have been asking for. So, this is a big ask and this is a multiplicative effect borne out of the four development agreements that we've had in the last year. We can't afford to keep going this way. Soon, we're, we're going to be spending our entire budget on benefits to developers as part of an agreement. Yes, we're paying less than the hundred percent, but eighty percent, that's barely a coupon from Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, may they rest in peace. That's a coupon. That's still a lot of money. So, we need to consider every single time we do a development agreement, oh, it's another road that we just have to cover. Where does that money come from? Our capital improvement plan. So, we've not been judicious up to this point. We're spending money that, well, we're not going to be able to spend on any number of sidewalks in the wedge, for example, or improvements to bike lanes. Sorry, we don't have the money. We're going to have to spend it on stormwater and other things for developers. A roundabout, too bad. These are considerations I don't think we've thought through. And because we're just shoving these through, fourth one in a year, let's just, let's get it going and let's get this project going. But sorry, you know, citizens, this CIP for the next budget is going to be a really ugly one.
Councilmember Evans.
Infrastructure is never sexy, but it's necessary for a city to function. And there have been many, 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 many years of infrastructure being punted down the road because there haven't been the resources and the desire to put it towards that. The good news is, is that not only will we be responsible for a percentage of the roundabouts, but guess what? We get an offset of three point eight million dollars for our parks. So, it kind of evens out. We get this infrastructure that's necessary to make sure that our traffic can flow really well through the city and we get to beautify our parks. So, I just want to make sure that as we're throwing these things out there, that we really take a look at the entire development agreement, the entire package. Because if we just, if we just pick individual items and don't take a look at the entirety, it's really easy to misconstrue the value to Woodinville. Additionally, Mr. City Manager, can you remind me, who's going to be responsible for project managing the roundabouts and the street expansions?
Under the infrastructure development agreement that's exhibited here, I believe it is Widener with Wooden Creek is the project lead on it, and then both us and Green Partners are contributing financially to the project.
Okay, so, we're freeing up our city staff, which means we can focus on other city projects because we're not having to project manage this, which also saves Woodinville and Woodinville taxpayers' money, correct?
Correct.
And brings more benefit because we can focus on other projects around the city.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? I've seen none. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rob Stello?
Yes.
Councilmember Bess Campbell?
No.
Mayor Millman?
Yes.
Councilmember Arndt?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
No.
Deputy Mayor Randolph?
Yes.
Motion passes five to two. Thank you. Next up, business item number ten, interviews and appointments to position number three hundred on planning commission. Mr. Buchanan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. This evening, I did receive, and I shared with the mayor just prior to the meeting when we received it, that our second applicant for the vacant position has withdrawn his name from consideration, which would leave us just with the incumbent. Per your adopted code, that incumbent, even though as the only applicant, would still need to go through, and I want to make sure, I put it away already, would need to go through the, the application and appointment process. That appointment process can look like whatever council deems necessary this evening. It's something to consider as you evaluate next steps in action plan here.
Okay. So, if I'm understanding you right, we have one applicant for this and the procedure is kind of up to us at this point, since we have one applicant?
Correct. Typically, and Jeff can jump in here, but typically you would go through the interview process and evaluate multiple applications. With one here, of course, it's entirely up to council's discretion. Your language in your code, as I mentioned, I make sure I quote it accurately here, that each seat must be subject to an open application and council appointment process. It does not specify in any case that an interview process is necessary. Food for thought.
Okay. Why don't we do this, throw it out to council to see if we want to go through the interview process since we have one candidate? Do I have desire to do that? Okay. Okay. So, we can just appoint, or I can appoint, and we vote, or does the council appoint and vote, or how does that work?
I can make a motion to appoint. See, Councilmember Steve, Commissioner Steve Yabroff to position of planning commissioner seat three hundred.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilmember Bess Campbell.
For reasons unknown, Commissioner Yabroff has decided to grace us with some more time on the planning commission. He's been serving our city for sixteen years in various capacities, from emergency preparedness to the planning commission and has become an invaluable and an incomparable resource for the city. There is nothing that he is unwilling to share with us. He is kind. He has done an excellent job bringing other commissioners up to speed. He and Chair Yabroff, sorry, Chair Stadler, they work very well together in a way that functions, in a way that makes sure that other planning commissioners have been learning. So, I think that I, for one, am very grateful that you have decided to have another term with us and that you're willing to share time away from your absolutely beautiful Corvette to give back to your city. I think that you are a testament to what Woodinville is. So, I am happy to, to appoint you and I'm happy to vote yes for you.
Discussion? I just want to also give you my appreciation for you and all people who serve our city on our commissions. It's much appreciated. I sat for almost two years right next to Ms. Yabroff, and he does an amazing job. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Seeing none? Thank you very much. Next up, business item number eleven, approval of resolution.
If I may for a moment?
Absolutely.
I want to thank you all for your confidence in me. I look forward to continuing to serve on the planning commission. It's been a pleasure and an honor to do so. And I look forward to Woodinville becoming even better than it is today. Thank you again.
Thank you. Business item number eleven, approval of resolution number six-two-six, adopting the twenty-twenty-three Woodinville Climate Action Plan. Mr. O'Neill.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight, I am joined once again by two members of Cascadia Consulting who have been assisting us throughout this project. Here in the room with us tonight is Nicole Gutierrez, the project manager for Cascadia. And joining us online is Gretchen Muller, who you met early on in this, this project. I'm going to run through a portion of the slide, the slide deck, hand it over to Nicole and then hopefully have an opportunity to answer questions or have any further deliberation on, on the plan itself. So, tonight, I'm going to give a little bit of background and context of where we've been, how we've wound up to this final draft that is before this council tonight, go over some of the strategies and actions, and then hopefully we can come to agreement on a, a plan that we can adopt and, and start to implement. I did want to call out a few items. The, the draft plan that was distributed weeks ago and that was available to the public for public comment is a little different than the one that was in the packet. And that is namely due to the items that are on this slide. We've added a message from the city, acknowledgements, executive summary, a section on how it all came together, and then compiling all of the different appendices that we have been meeting with the commissions and this council about. So, that draft plan that was open for public comment went from about sixty pages to, I think, about one hundred and twenty. But much of that was just piecing together all of these things that we've been working on individually. A large piece of that being, all of the comments received during the virtual open house have also been included, which makes up a large section in and of itself of that increase. But really, the nuts and the bolts, the, the main pieces of the plan remain relatively unchanged, aside from incorporating feedback from the commissioners, council members, and the public feedback we received. So, again, just a quick overview of how we got to this, this final draft. The city was awarded a eighty thousand dollar grant to fund this project way back in July. After procurement process, interviews, we selected Cascadia Consulting to assist us on this endeavor. And for the last six months, we've been working through this project. I did want to specifically highlight that this project typically takes cities twelve to eighteen months, and we've been able to accomplish this in six months. And we didn't do that by cutting corners. All of the same things that these other cities that do take longer to, to complete their planning process, we did them. We were just able to do them in a, a shorter time period. So, that's, that's, that's a good success in and of itself, given the, the timeline and the restrictions that the grant placed upon us, requiring us to have it done by the end of this month. The Climate Action Plan is essentially broken into four different sections, first being greenhouse gas emissions. So, that's the, the data, kind of the basis for where we are and where we want to go. A next piece being community engagement, hearing from the community, from stakeholders about what their vision is for the city as we plan for, for addressing climate impacts, identifying goals and strategies and actions. So, how can we reduce our greenhouse gas emissions? What can we do here locally in Woodinville to help the situation? And then finally, the implementation plan being, how do we put those strategies and actions? How do we put those ideas? How do we, how do we make them happen? It's one thing to have it on a piece of paper. It's another to come back to this council and show steady progress towards meeting our goals. It is, it is important to note that this plan really is just the starting point. It took a lot of work and, and I think we're proud of where we're at, but every future action from here on will also require careful thought and deliberation. Science and technology is constantly evolving. There are things that, that may come up as we work through implementing this, this plan, and it will be important to have conversations and to make sure that we are considering all, all the different factors that come into play with the individual action items and potentially action items that, that don't exist. So, this is just the beginning, just kind of the, the jumping off point. So, there will be much more to come, but we got to start somewhere. In terms of public engagement, this, this, this plan was broken into three different phases, first being developing the climate goals and metrics. This was done by doing a public survey, reaching out to the public, finding, figuring out what their thoughts are, what their ideas are. Second, moving on to developing and prioritizing strategies and actions, where we began meeting with the commissions, with this council, with stakeholders, having interviews, doing a business roundtable. And then moving into phase three, which was plan development, where we had a draft and we sought feedback and refinement on that, that plan, that draft. We did that through a virtual open house where we recorded one hundred and twenty-three comments in just four weeks. I do want to bring up that this was actually a very good turnout, although it sounds like a small number. And we, we, we actually got almost as much as cities four times our size. Something to keep in mind with these virtual open, open houses is that, you know, these aren't, this isn't a quick five-minute survey that you can, you can take from, from anywhere. It takes someone who's willing to invest some time, to look at the document, to read it, and to provide their feedback and their thoughts. Many of those comments, most, I should say, were actually incorporated into the plan in some way. So, so it definitely had an impact on, on this final plan that is, that is before you tonight. The other piece is, we specifically wanted to reach out to our youth. Alana Winston, our community engagement coordinator, and I went to both Chrysalis High School and Woodinville High School, met with the, the Earth Club at Woodinville High and the civics class at Chrysalis and had very, very good, robust conversations with them about our, our strategies and actions and, and got a lot of feedback from them, from the youth, about what their vision for this city is and how this plan can best reflect that vision. There is a lot more detail on our engagement in the plan, in the, the engagement appendix, but that's just kind of a little brief overview of the public piece. A couple of things, a couple of themes that we heard across the board, across all three phases, was that people are excited about renewable energy sources. They want more safe biking and safe walking, want to protect and expand green spaces, open spaces, are interested in expansion of EV infrastructure, electric vehicle infrastructure throughout the city, increasing recycling and composting and education associated with those, especially composting, as it's not something we, we do very much of in Woodinville currently. So, again, more details are provided in the plan, but that's kind of the, some of the main high-level themes we heard. In terms of city engagement, we may, we attended two public spaces commission meetings, three planning commission meetings. Planning commissions meetings were focused on the comprehensive plan element of this project, which is why there was more planning commission than public spaces. But both of those, further attempts at kind of getting feedback from the public, from our commissioners, as it relates to their duties in those commissions. And then this fourth meeting with council, and we held two workshops with staff to work through some of the details of the plan with, with our own subject matter experts in our respective departments and fields here at City Hall.
Great, thanks.
So, I was going to say, with that, I want to hand it over to Nicole.
Right, thanks, Kevin. Great. And then another critical component of the cap development process was conducting a greenhouse gas inventory and wedge analysis. I know we've already had touchpoints and provided more detailed explanation of these analyses, but just wanted to- But just wanted to reiterate here that what these analyses provided was valuable insight into the sources of current and future greenhouse gas emissions and helped the city develop the strategies and actions in this Climate Action Plan that will strategically target the city's key emission sources. And what that looks like, I wanted to pull one of the figures that is provided in the Climate Action Plan, specifically, this section is summarized on pages 16 through 18. So this is the wedge analysis. And as you can see, in that purple, what I want to point to here is this purple shaded area above that lower dotted line. That is the gap, the emissions that need to be addressed through the Climate Action Plan Strategies and Actions to achieve the modeled targets that are depicted with the stars on that lower line. So all that gray area is what we're assuming will be reduced over time based on federal, state, regional climate policies. And then what Woodenville really can focus on in this cap is that purple shaded area. So now that we covered engagement at a high level as well as the greenhouse gas analyses, wanted to move on to cap strategies and actions as well as providing some more information on implementation. So really, a high-level snapshot of where we landed on with the final Climate Action Plan Strategies and Actions. So based on community feedback, meeting internally with city staff, where we landed was five focus areas. So Buildings and Energy, Transportation, Consumption and Materials Management, Natural Systems and Water, and Community Resilience. We have municipal-focused strategies and actions in here as well as community-wide. And those are depicted within this section. And want to share that this is pages 21 through 33 in the draft that was provided. Overall, we have 13 strategies and 43 actions. And from a really broad, high level, these encompass mitigation and adaptation strategies and actions. So mitigation being actions that address the cause of climate change by reducing greenhouse gas emissions or creating carbon sinks. And then adaptation, so actions that address the impacts of climate change and prepare the community for those impacts. And happy to delve into any specific strategies or actions you have questions on. Now we're at the end of the presentation. And then wanting to cover briefly the implementation section, starting on page 32 and going through 38. This section covers the broad implementation strategy for implementing the Climate Action Plan. So we identified four key factors when implementing the Climate Action Plan, one being oversight and accountability. So identifying who's leading this implementation of the plan, identifying the staff departments that will be critical to collaborate with. And there are equity considerations as well. So when you're implementing these actions and strategies, thinking about the disproportionate impacts, unintended consequences, and ensuring equitable distribution of the benefits of implementing these actions. Monitoring and evaluation. This focuses kind of on the numbers and tracking of progress of implementation of the cap. So things like updating and conducting the greenhouse gas inventory every two to four years, really just wanting one or two greenhouse gas inventories for you to gauge progress before the five-year update to the Climate Action Plan. So you can right the ship if you're seeing we're not reducing greenhouse gas emissions as much as we anticipated in implementing the cap and being able to adaptively manage this plan. We also recommend annual progress reports that would be publicly available, focused on the targets and metrics for each focus area, but also recognizing there aren't targets and metrics for every single strategy and action. So this progress report would also include major milestones such as programs or plans that were implemented. Ongoing community engagement will also be critical. There are several actions explicitly about engaging the Woodenville community, whether that be in education or outreach. It's really about prioritizing community input. And there's also equity considerations for this implementation factor as well. So ensuring that any outreach material is accessible for different households and businesses and also provided in appropriate formats and languages as needed. And finally, funding. So this will largely be determined by the city to develop a funding strategy to implement the cap. But some things to consider are utilizing the city general fund, state and federal grants, as well as the variety of other funding opportunities identified in the implementation details. And I also want to note here that it's important to recognize that there is a cost associated with implementing these actions. But there's also a net benefit that can be gained for the environment, the community, and the economy of Woodenville as well. And then there is more detail provided in the Implementation Matrix Appendix. So I just wanted to provide a really quick overview of what is included in this appendix. So for each action, we've considered the following considerations. So identifying the action lever. So what states the action required by the city to implement an action. And you can see the six options at the bottom there. So there's voluntary, regulatory, capital project studies, planning, and partnerships. We also delve into implementation considerations, not included in the action itself. So providing resources and/or notes the city can consider when implementing an action. We identify anticipated co-benefits, so the additional social, economic, and/or environmental benefits of implementing a climate action. And timeline is also shared in this matrix. And you can see the three timeline IDs at the bottom of the screen there. So there's ongoing, short-term, and long-term. Lead department is identified, as well as potential partnerships. And this was vetted and refined with city staff. And finally, the other thing I wanted to mention about the Appendix A is that it includes high-level takeaways from the cost-benefit analysis that was conducted, which you'll be able to read the full memo as Appendix D in the Climate Action Plan. So for the, it's 11 selected actions, but CM 1.1 and 1.2 were combined. We either conducted a cost analysis solo, which is that cost-benefit, or we did a cost-impact analysis in addition to that cost analysis. So the cost analysis determines the net present value, meaning the anticipated net cost of the action for the city and Woodenville community, considering current and future costs and cost-saving benefits. And this is projected through 10 years from now. And then the cost-impact analysis was done for actions that were mitigation actions so that we could quantify the greenhouse gas reduction and associate a value with that. And I provided two examples here. I know the text is really actually small, so I apologize for that. But just as an example, so we include the NPV costs to the city and the community when applicable, the greenhouse gas reduction potential of that action, and the cost per greenhouse gas emission unit as a way to share the results of that cost-benefit analysis. And as you'll read in the memo, we didn't consider, you know, all the benefits that come, such as the ecological benefits, things like that. But this is really tying it to the greenhouse gas emission reduction and using the assumptions that are detailed in the memo. And with that, thank you for your attention tonight. And I will hand it back to Kevin.
Thank you, Nicole. So at this point, Nicole and I and Gretchen are happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Comes from Ms. Best Campbell.
So this has to be updated with our comp plan. When are we going to get into the nitty-gritty of what we're going to prioritize moving forward? Is this something we're going to talk about mid-biennium? Is this something we're going to talk about next budget? Is it something we're going to do one-off when we see grants? I mean, I'm trying to think about, how are we going to start this process? I know the comp plan update is a big one, but it'd be nice to get some movement going on this. I know you guys have been working really hard to get this to us in a timeframe that's probably half of what other communities have done. But, you know, now that we've got it, we've got all these great ideas. First, we've got to, you know, plan it and then afford it, and then do it. So, you know, how soon can we do it, I guess, is the question?
It depends. So it's a little of all of that. For example, one item we've already begun working on is development of a strategy for building out our electric vehicle charging stations, right? That has already essentially kicked off here at City Hall. But other items, but everything else in this plan currently is unfunded. So we'll begin to have these conversations here at the mid-biennium or seeking grants or coming back to this council sooner potentially with a budget request.
Anyone else? Councilmember Evans.
So you said seeking grants, which is always a magic word to me. So I've been taking a look at the grants available at the county, at the state, and at the federal level. And there are quite a few. So do we have the resources to really prioritize and think about which grants we want to go after that can really support the plan?
Brandon, do you want to take that one on?
Short answer, no. We've discussed this a little bit with council, I know, in the past. But it becomes a triage situation. If we have capital projects, for example, that are already adopted by the council as a priority and a grant opportunity for something that would fit well in those CIP, that would support one of those CIP projects comes up, then obviously, that kind of moves to the top of our interest radar as opposed to something that we haven't talked about that is new and not on the CIP, then that kind of goes further down that list. So to answer your question directly, no, we don't have dedicated resources to this. It is an add-on to everything else that we do.
And is there a way? Because I know some of this is for developments and that sort of thing. Is there a way that we can either take a look at our code and what may need to be changed and/or, you know, looked at in Planning Commission and in council to align with the plan? And, which, you know, obviously takes some snap time, but that wouldn't be a big budget hit. And would we be looking at another potential consultant to help with grant writing and going after things? Or are we still in the early phases?
I think you have a lot of questions in that one. And I think certainly, as the continued interest from council and the availability that we're seeing, especially at the federal level that you're all aware of right now, I think that's certainly a conversation we're going to have around how much capacity we have to pursue and administer. That's an important piece, various grant opportunities. I think, as Mr. O'Neil mentioned, there are pieces of this plan that are pretty low-hanging fruit that we can accomplish even without a lot of budget increases or without any budget increases. He mentioned one already with the EV charger plan. I think that's a great example. Another one that we have in here is a proclamation supporting renewable aviation fuels. There's not a lot of cost to that, obviously. So there's some ones that we can do earlier without having to go through the budget process. But I think a large part of this conversation to address Councilmember Best Campbell's point is we will have to have some conversations about how much of a priority certain items are in this plan and everything else that the city has to do as we get in a budget process a year from now.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Mark.
I guess I have a big-picture question. So this final draft of the plan is the first time that we have a lot of the hard numbers around what our actions might accomplish. And you started off by showing us that analysis, the wedge analysis, of what our piece is. Does this plan take care of that piece? If we implemented every strategy, do we take care of that piece? If we implement half the strategies, where are we? I guess that's kind of my question. It's one thing to just put together a plan and come up with some actions that we could do. And of course, then we have to go through budgeting and figure out what we can afford. But fundamentally, are we hitting what we're aiming for here? Or is this just represent a token gesture towards climate? So, big question.
And I'll take a stab at answering this first, Gretchen, and then might hand it off to you. But I will, so we identified 11 priority actions to conduct a cost-benefit analysis on that also included an impact analysis on the majority of those. But we haven't done an impact analysis on every single one of these actions. And there's also different levers to pull that sometimes it's that carrot in the stick or leash conversation where what are you going to pull to incentivize, you know, folks doing these actions or regulating it, which can yield different impact results? So to answer your question, we don't have the analyses, the numbers to say we're going to be hitting or fulfilling, reducing the greenhouse gas emissions in that wedge analysis. However, that's something that could be continuously explored or expanded as we go on to 2040 and 2050 when the targets are more aggressive, like the 75% and the 95% targets.
Nicole, the only thing that I'll add there too is as a company, we've done a lot of climate action plans. And so pulling from best practices and picking actions, one, that are, you know, customized to you all and working with the staff to find the right suite of actions. But we pick impactful actions, right? So really making sure that, to your point, council member, that this isn't just a plan that is a token plan for, you know, some type of climate action, but that it truly is an impactful plan and that these are a set of actions that will really get you there. But to Nicole's point, doing further analysis and number crunching is something that you all could do as part of your adaptive management. Are we getting where we need to go? And that's something that with all of the clients that we work with, we say, you know, there's no such thing as a static plan. Okay, we're done, right? It needs to be implemented, and then you need to adaptively manage it to dial up the levers if you're not getting where you need to go. But feel really confident in these set of actions that we've put forward in front of you all.
Any other comments? Do you have a motion?
I move to approve Resolution Number 626, adopting the 2023 Woodenville Climate Action Plan.
Second.
I have a motion of second. Maker of the motion?
It's kind of been a long time coming for us to do a lot with a climate plan. I do think we need to be motivated by this and definitely move forward quickly. Environmental factors are quite evident if you're watching the news. And I believe that's difficult to argue against. So this is kind of, once again, a starting point for us to try and push those measures forward.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I would just like to point out that, first, I'd like to thank staff a lot of work in a very short period of time. I'd like to thank the consultants for all their work on this. We are running up to, as Councilmember Evans talked about, we're running into a lot of grant opportunities. And I know Brandon wants to take the G off my keyboard, but there will be more. Well, all that resulted in was everything I typed to you said rant, so it was not good. So grant opportunities, we will be able to modify as we go. And that will be dependent on what's effective and what grant opportunities are available and what we could tackle. And those are numerous right now. We have the deadline that we need to meet because of the grant that we got for this Climate Action Plan. You know, fundamentally, I think we owe it to our youth, our citizens, and particularly our youth. We need to leave things better than we found it, and this is an opportunity to be able to do that and take action on probably maybe the most important issue facing future generations right now, and that's climate that's going on. We're seeing crazy heat everywhere. The oceans are heating up. There's smokes coming out of Canada like crazy. We're supposed to hit some record temperatures this summer, and I think I support this and I hope that we pass out. Any other comments? Can we take a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Robstello?
Yes.
Councilmember Bes Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Millman?
Yes.
Councilmember Arn?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Randolph?
Yes.
Unanimous. Motion carries. Thank you. Next item, public hearing approval of resolution number 624, 2024-2029 Transportation Improvement Program. Mr. Souza.
Mr. Mayor, I'd recommend a motion and action by council to open a public hearing, and then we can receive.
Oh, sorry, you're right. Public hearing. Do you have a motion?
I move to open the public hearing and accept both testimony on 2024 Transportation Improvement Plan.
I have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Seeing none? Public hearing's open.
Well, hello again. I'll actually be handling this presentation, and Mr. Souza is obviously available for any questions you may have that I may not be able to answer. This is going to be a pretty quick one. Years ago, the city decided to do much of our improvement planning, especially as it relates to capital projects, on a biennial basis through the Capital Improvement Program. We recently adopted, I shouldn't say recently, I suppose it was six, seven months ago now at this point, our 2023-2028 Capital Improvement Plan. However, RCW 35.77 requires the city to go through and adopt a transportation improvement plan every year, and the deadline for that is the end of June each year. And to submit that to the Department of Commerce, PSRC, and also use it as a document to coordinate with neighboring jurisdictions, cities, special districts, et cetera. So, all of the information contained in this Transportation Improvement Plan is pulled directly from that CIP plan that we already conducted public engagement on, that we already vetted, that we already prioritized, and that we already assigned funding to through our biennial budget. So, again, much of this is a formality in many ways. What this plan is not is it's not fiscally constrained, it's not prioritized, it is not a commitment to any particular project. That is a function of the CIP and the city's budget. And no estimates or values in this are absolute in any way. They're constantly evolving and will require further refinement during the next CIP planning process. The plan is broken into three different sections, first section being partially or fully funded projects, which in this, in this year, I believe there's only one partially funded project. The second being unfunded projects, and the third being newly added projects, which are not funded. The third section, typically we start to see projects added there this time next year as we are halfway through the planning process for the CIP, so we already have a good idea of what our new projects are, and so they find their way on that list in anticipation of being adopted and included in the CIP. But we want to make sure they're in the TAP just in case grants become available or other cities are looking at doing projects that, you know, are right on the city limits or what have you. In total, there's 47 projects. Forty-four are, oh, boy, and I'm seeing the math doesn't add up there. Forty-four are from the CIP. Seven are long-range, so actually it should be 40 from the CIP. Seven are long-range TAP projects. These are projects that have been on the TAP for several years now. These are very big, long-range projects that don't really nicely fit in that six-year window of the TAP or the CIP, but we have left them there just so we don't really, we don't lose sight of them should funding or other opportunities become available. There's a little over $49 million in allocated funding from various sources, including developer contributions and over $221 million in total, total project estimated costs. And then recommendation is, you know, complete the public hearing with public testimony and adopt the TAP.
Seeing if we have any public testimony? Nope, no public testimony? Okay. Do I have a motion?
May I ask?
Councilmember Bes Campbell.
I had a quick question about what's included on this project. So, we have, in previous council meetings, we've discussed that there's potentially rezoning in general business. Are there any projects in here that would address potential road improvements there? Or are there any you can think of on the spur of the moment that we should add that potentially would benefit GB? Or is it easy for us to amend it?
There's nothing currently in there. This is obviously just drawn from our currently adopted CIP. We are, and I think at your next meeting, if all goes according to schedule, we will be looking at some initial analysis from our transportation plan consultant about what potential projects or what the impact of a potential upzoning in the GB would look like, and from that would flow potential projects to mitigate those impacts. So, long answer, we don't have anything now. We will be having that conversation, and we'll be part of the CIP conversation this time next year, and at the same time, having the conversation about a TIP this same time next year.
So, would we make the amendments when we get the presentation? Are we going to fold it into mid biennium or the next adjustment? Just trying to figure how soon we want to get that in terms of grant funding, in terms of things for the state?
That, we won't have that, we won't have those projects until that transportation plan is adopted, you know, this year, next year?
Next year.
Next year. So, this would, at soonest would be a conversation when we're having the TIP conversation again this time next year, and certainly as we go into next fall when we're working through the budget process.
I'm just thinking about with development, developers would not get impact fees back for projects that are not on this list. Is that correct? So, if we don't identify it and someone builds in GB before we finalize this list, how is that going to impact any development agreement in terms of what we can ask for and request, and what is?
Yeah. Yes, if I'm understanding incorrectly, you're correct. There's nothing, those projects for GB don't exist yet. Those won't be identified until the transportation plan is finalized and adopted, and then those projects would be, at that point, I believe, well, no, now we've changed it where they have to be on the CIP, so they would have to be adopted in a future CIP to be eligible for those impact fee credits.
Brendan, I'd also add that those projects probably won't get identified until after comp plan and zoning's done.
Yeah. So, it's still a couple of years away. I think all of that to say, we're super early in that conversation right now. We don't have those projects identified and won't till at least a year from now.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none?
I move to close the public hearing for the 2024-2029 Transportation Improvement Plan.
Second.
A motion and second? Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Thank you.
I also move to approve resolution number 624, adopting the six-year Transportation Improvement Program for the years 2024 to 2029, for submission to the Washington State Secretary of Transportation and the Washington State Transportation Improvement Board.
Second.
I have a motion and second? Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Public comments? Do we have anybody signed up for second period of public comments? Okay, we have one person signed up. Please come to the podium, state your name, whether you live in the city limits. You have three minutes. Alex Campbell.
Good evening again. Alex Campbell, live in the city limits. I showed you all this slide earlier tonight. I was at the time hoping to point out that the developer always made money. In fact, it's $150,000 with the way you passed it tonight, $150,000 per month of additional profit that's above the market rate value. You gave them $150,000 every month. To put that in perspective, during the budget cycle, putting streetlights on 183rd, I think that was the street, was about that much. So, every month, that developer can fund an entire project that you didn't have money for because of your choice. If we had gone and put a 10% requirement on each phase, and they still chose to do the MFTE, because they would probably still want to get the money, it would have been $146,000 a month. Not a lot of difference for them. But 185 units would have been created versus 128. So, let me put that in perspective. That's 57 units. And everyone goes, well, 57 units, it's in the noise. 57 units means 57 households that don't have to drive into the Woodinville to work. Let's assume they live about 30 minutes away. You know, that's pretty typical for a commute around here. That's an hour every day that you've stolen from their lives. 57 people, probably more, because they probably have roommates. We just had the climate discussion. 57 people driving works out to 126 metric tons of carbon dioxide released every year for that one, for that one gallon of gas for the 20-mile commute every day. So, that is a pretty significant impact, both in people's lives and driving, and it fills our roads up. Need I point out, that's 57 more cars that come into the city, park, and go out of the city every day. So, it's real unfortunate, it's real sad. There was an interesting article in The Urbanist about nimbyism, and I think this was nimbyism. You chose to give away something instead of fighting for it, and I really don't understand why. I just don't.
Okay. Report to city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Two items, well, kind of two items this evening. One of them, your next meeting would naturally fall on July 4th. We will obviously not be having that meeting as it's an official city holiday. The following one would be the July 11th, which is our second meeting. We would, we're looking at hopefully skipping that one. I think we don't, we'll be all right moving to the following week on the 18th, which would be your third meeting, which normally we would have. So, hopefully, if, unless any pressing business comes up, we won't need to meet again until July 18th. And then I know, as we go through council member reports here, I believe one of the members of the Trestle Design Subcommittee will be sharing kind of a brief update on the one meeting that we've had since this council last was together. So, yep, I think that's it.
Thank you. Reports to the council members. Councilmember Evans?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilwoman Robstello?
Thank you. Last week, Jared Hill, our government relations person, and I went on a field trip to East Trail to look, King County, believe it or not, was looking for money. They have the responsibility for the East Trail about a mile north of I-90 and south of I-90, including the railroad bridge over I-90. And they think all of that together is about $60 million. And in some shrewd negotiation in exchange for two cool baseball hats, I promised them $5 million. Just kidding. But, yeah, they'll be around with their handout soon looking for money for, I mean, it's a good project. Everything on East Trail is a good project. Everything's expensive. But they plan on that, it's a big, it's a huge version of our little trestle here, the metal sides with the track and ballast across it. They're just going to pull it out and pave it, and it's $20 million to do that. So, kind of a lot of money. Anyway, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Randolph?
Nothing this evening. Thanks.
Councilmember Bes Campbell?
I have a few things, but I'll talk fast as always. On June 13th, we had the Wood Trails ribbon cutting. That was the first step towards, you know, cutting out those new trails, and I know we've had park impact fees since February when Main Street paid for some projects. So, I'd like to know, you know, how soon we can think about getting that RFQ for that project? You know, we've talked about ribbon cutting, and I'd really like to see some dirt in a shovel and moving some dirt around. I know the community would appreciate that as well. Today was the last day of school for all but seniors, and there is a retirement of a man who can only be described as an institution in the city of Woodinville, that is Doug Elidge. He's a first-grade teacher at Wellington, and he's been there since the day the doors opened in 1978. And if you've never seen a six-foot-seven man wear every year a Big Bird costume, you've really missed out. It was his last day of school today. He promises that he will be continuing on as a substitute teacher because he can't quit Wellington, and it's bittersweet. You know, he, of course, deserves all the happiness in retirement, but, man, he was really impactful in this community, and I know that a lot of people who still live here remember the day that they had Mr. Elidge as their first-grade teacher. So, you know, you've been here for 45 years, you've probably known Mr. Elidge, and your kids have probably known him and possibly even your grandkids. So, I'm sad to see him go, but I'm pretty sure he's going to stick around. And there's one more thing I wanted to bring everybody's attention to. We had a public comment emailed to us from Carrie Scarborough about a project called Dark at Night, and I think it plays in well with this action plan we're talking about. It's a request for public institutions to turn lights off in city buildings at night, obviously for the darkness of sky so you could see the stars, but also it's to help migratory birds not run into windows. So, I think this is a project that we could easily encourage City Hall to do, but also the community, turn off lights at night. It's cost-effective. I know it's very expensive to light the ball field, so if we can look into, you know, what it would take to put lights on timers, turn them off when people aren't here, I think it's a very simple project, but which could really have extensive benefits, and we could be a leader in that, and that's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Mark?
Thank you. I'm going to start with the subcommittee report. The subcommittee on the Trestle Bridge met on June 15th. We looked at the options that were put together by council at the previous, at the meeting previous to that. We talked through them with our design consultants in our specific context, talking about things like the distance that our bridge spans and potential safety issues. Talked about things like cost and feasibility in our space for the designs that council liked and appreciated, and we also reviewed the feedback that we had previously received from both public spaces and from public input in that process. The subcommittee came to a conclusion that it is very important that we preserve the view corridors and the light that is coming through that bridge, that that, the next design should really incorporate that as a significant feature, and particularly the bridge design that we had seen that incorporated the various colored panels was one of the favorites, but we're looking at investigating the material that it's made from for safety, cost, and those sorts of issues. Our next meeting will be on July 13th, and after we get some new designs, we will bring that back to council. Beyond that, two things tonight. I'm really happy to say that the YMCA is hosting summer movies for families at the Carol Edwards Center this year. So, there are four dates set up, June 23rd, this Friday, July 14th, August 4th, and August 25th. These are free and open to the public. Activities start at 7:30 PM, and the movies will start at dusk. This week's movie is Raya and the Last Dragon, if you haven't seen that one. This week's movie is Raya and the Last Dragon, if you haven't seen that one. But you can always just go and play some games and get your face painted, hang out if you don't want to stay for the movie. But I think it's a fantastic opportunity, not only to have a community event for families in our downtown space, but to also help promote some of our businesses in the Schoolhouse District because you're going to want to hang around, have some food, have some gelato, have a beer or a glass of wine, and have fun. So that, and then a third thing, totally unrelated. But in the past week, the mayor and I had the opportunity to sit down with Alexis Mercedes-Ring from the King County Regional Homeless Authority, sorry, acronyms. And one thing that came out of that conversations is that they have finished assembling a lot of the data that they have been collecting across the county on homelessness, and they can trace specific individuals back to the city of their last residence. And as of June 14th, they had 32 individuals identified from Woodinville who are currently accessing services of one kind or another, whether it's housing or day centers or various other types of services that they're tracking. But they have that data, and so now we can query it a little bit, ask some questions. And I think that's going to be a good starting point for conversations going forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor?
None tonight.
A couple of things. I'll start with the homelessness. So I had interaction and discussion at the Starbucks at 140th with an individual that had been, came over by bus from Seattle and was kicked off the bus and was at the park and ride, and then eventually made her way over to the Starbucks. And I watched staff interact and eventually the firefighters, a King County sheriff, they all did a great job. And then she went and went to Evergreen Health. And I highlight this again because there was another incident there that they put locks on the doors, and I found out that was another homelessness interaction that caused damage and some problems with the bathroom that resulted in $20,000 of cost to fixing the problems that were done there. So we do have homelessness issue in Woodinville. We are taking proactive steps. We certainly need to do more. Rotary Park, I went to last Saturday with, I don't know, there's between a dozen and 20 possibly Rotarians that we were in the park, pressure washing, pruning some of the bushes, limbs that were intruding on the path. We were scraping off some of the debris, picking up litter. Anyway, it was a great turnout. It looks a lot better. One thing I did notice that the grids that are filled in or used to be filled in with sand and gravel are kind of getting thin and are becoming a trip hazard in some areas. I think it'd be a good project, and I think the Rotarians would probably take that on again where we could get the material delivered out. We could wheelbarrow it out and spread it out and kind of smooth that out. I think there's some need there. Also, Rich McKee, he's the president of the car club, reached out to me, and Dino's, Dino of Dino Automotive, unfortunately recently passed away unexpectedly. He asked if we could get the sign to his widow, his wife. And I reached out to the construction company there that was doing some work on the strip mall over there, and they've either today or recently got it to him, or it's in the process. So that was a great, that was a great work by Mr. McKee. So I was happy to take part in that. So, and that's all I have.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Adjourn.